Here, so we do have a quorum. So we are good to go. Councilmember Paulson first. Heck. That's us. Welcome all of you. And let's go ahead and get started. We started out with the Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, immediately after, if anyone would like to offer a prayer, comment, or remark. Did it just go on? Do I need to start over again? We're good to go?
Yeah, you were recording.
Oh, you've been recording?
Yeah.
All right.
On my end.
It's just the YouTube is recording.
All right. So let's go ahead and get started. And please follow me while I recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of Afghanistan. One nation, one earth, one individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone would like to offer a prayer or talk this evening from the audience or the council, raise your hand and recognize you. Counsel, council member.
Our eternal Father in heaven, we bow our heads in gratitude for the blessings of our lives. We're grateful to live here in this free country, in this beautiful valley, where we enjoy peace and so many luxuries. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for health and strength that allows us to be here. We're grateful for the opportunities that we have to share in our abundance. Heavenly Father, please bless that thy Spirit will be here, that we can have wisdom in the decisions that we make. Please bless that those who speak will feel heard and that we can understand each other, that we can treat each other with kindness. We pray that we can be efficient with our time and that we can always treat each other with graciousness. And we offer this prayer in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. All right. We start off our agenda with staff reports. So we have our city manager, city reporter, our city land use expert, Scarlett. We don't have a city engineer here, city attorney. We have our public works directors as well. Rob Stapley, Rob, you want to start us off?
Hello, council. I guess we're coming to the close on this budget year. So I guess I'd like to report that we stayed within our budget. We accomplished most of the plans and goals that we had for the year. There might have been a couple of things that fell through the cracks when it comes to contractor availability and costs of supplies or COVID. There's a number of things that we had to get through when it came to obstacles. But I think overall, we had a good year. We still haven't been able to fill the vacant slot in my water and sewer supervisory position. We've had a few applicants, but just didn't quite make the grade on the desired and required minimum requirements for that. We're still hoping and optimistic that we can get the word out there and somebody will roll along to help fill that vacant slot. We did, however, offer the job to an entry level position for the same department, which will help with the daily current needs with that department. His name is Dane Adams, and he's scheduled to begin this coming Monday. So that'll at least help the department keep things rolling along. But we're still looking for that qualified individual for the supervisory spot. When it comes to projects, the fiber project has begun. It's in full force up there doing micro trenching on Spring Creek Road. They're doing a whole bunch of the road crossings to prepare for our streets project downtown. So you'll start seeing a lot of detours and roadblocks and things like that. Gravel to beware of in the downtown areas because fiber guys are getting in before the road projects come, which are also slated to begin very soon, probably in the first week of July. We'll start seeing the Grand Johnsons move in and start doing some of the water aspects of that project along with the Spring Creek Road. As soon as the micro trenching is done, the Spring Creek Road, that's slated to get ground off and a new pad put down on it, along with First East on the east side of the elementary school and the First North. Piece of the puzzle will be the first thing that we see get worked on with the streets project. So first part of July, we'll start seeing a whole bunch more occur as well. Reservoirs underway as well. It's got a lot of columns, footings in the columns have been born. And so that's moving along as well. I guess the only other thing I'd like to bring up with you is water conservation. So with the extremely hot temperatures, dry weather that we've had, I've watched a significant rise in water use. So the numbers that we're currently seeing are numbers that we typically see in the middle of July, not June. So when it comes to getting the word out there, we're talking about different types of education and notification that we can do to people to try to recommend conserving water. We are currently doing our part with the city. We've cut things back. They've actually just been cut back. We've just never ramped them up since the beginning of the season. So we're watering about two thirds of what we normally do as far as clock times and days. We might be cutting that back some more. I've heard that from both ditch companies that they're struggling to accommodate everybody's desires on the typical water use that you see go through the town. So the fact that things are drying up and getting more difficult, since we're not seeing any helpful rains, things might ramp up to be a little bit more difficult as time comes. We'll just do what we can, the best we can, as we face this incoming summer heat. That's all I really have to report. Got any questions? I field them.
We've got fibers. That started, crew started. There's one crew and we've got three more crews coming.
There's one crew that's doing the micro trenching, and then there's another crew doing the trenching for the conduits downtown. They are anticipating having another crew to show up at the end of the month, first of next month. So that's definitely underway.
So what is your recommendation for encouraging water conservation?
Well, I think people will be surprised that they can keep the grass green enough and cut their time way back. And that's what we have actually noticed with our parks. Shane, he's ever been one that I could, you know, give a high five for for conserving lots of water. He likes green grass, but he has kept it back and he has been surprisingly surprised in a pleasant way how good some of the ones still look with the water cutback that we've done. So I would assume that homeowners can see the same results and cut the time back. Generally, we see a kind of an influx of concerns and people dialing their stuff back in August because they get their July bill and they haven't seen their water bills yet for whatever. They're trying to keep their fluffy green stuff, right and green right now. So they haven't seen their bill for that yet. They haven't cut it back yet, but it's time to really look into that and dial those back sooner the better because you can have.
To send an email with some information or recommendations? Is that something that should go out?
No, we've, Ryan and I talked with Natalie, who's kind of runs our public notice type of stuff. And she's advising of something, some emails, maybe some flyers and stuff to try to start in ahead of that. Any more?
People are commenting on Facebook all the time. We had a lot of people taking pictures. It was, thank you.
Thank you. Rob, what's the salary range on the position that you've been trying to hire?
Twenty-one to twenty-seven, depending on experience.
Hourly?
Hourly.
Okay. I just asked where if the city said we've had a hard time hiring, you know, wages and things. The city been experiencing similar things across the border?
The whole valley seems to have a huge shortage of employees from the market that's out there. Everybody seems to be in that search mode. I've spread the word. One of the main criterias for our water sewer position is heavy equipment experience. And that private sector seems to be really hard to get people to want to move away from because they're paying, they're paying more than that, believe it or not. And so getting qualified, experienced operators is proving difficult.
That's, I'm wondering, it's just, you know, salaries are not enough. And then I know you're dealing with, you know, salary compression and inversion issues and things like that. But, you know, it may be time to start having a discussion about how to solve that problem long term. You know, if we're in this for a while and we have a difficult time hiring people, so.
Very true.
You have any announcements? A bunch of other?
I'll be quick. Last Monday was the last day to declare for candidacy. As you know, we have our mayor position open and two positions for council. We have two candidates for mayor running and four candidates for our two positions. So we will have no primaries. We'll go right into the general election come this November. Any more information on our website? You can see their names and their declarations. The Justice Court will be going back to in person starting July, second week of July. As you know, we've been doing it virtual. June will be our last month in virtual. We are in the process of doing a re-codification of the city code. We're contracting the municipal code. This is a year-long project. What they're going to do is get one of their attorneys to basically go over our city code inside and out, update it, refresh it, basically a big nice overhaul. That's all I have. If you guys have any questions.
Several planning commission members, Ryan, Diana, myself, attended the mid-year cash summit. It was on affordable housing. One of the interesting things, since you were talking about unemployment, they showed a lot of different, and one of them was that with our unemployment rate as low as it is, it's below full employment. They usually consider full employment at four percent, around four percent, more down in the twos. So it's very, very competitive trying to find people. And our housing stock is not theirs, as Christina can attest. And there were several realtors in attendance, quite a few realtors in attendance, actually, yesterday. It was, it was a good thing. It was a, there wasn't any new news, but it was a nice dialogue to have with private sector, public sector, different walks, trying to come up with ideas to work towards improving our housing stock and improving costs if possible. Material costs were discussed, things like that. A lot of things are kind of out of our control. There are a few things that we can look at, and we will. One of the things that we've been talking about is our land use application process, our land use application and approval process. If we've tried to do things to speed that up, if we can do that, if we've talked about some other ideas to try and do that, we have 20 active land use applications in-house right now, a mix of subdivisions and conditional use and upper rezones and things like that, that some of them we've seen, some of them haven't quite got far enough to come to you yet, but we are staying busy. I tried, the survey that we had that said that people liked to get information from email, started doing that with our code compliance, and it's really worked quite well. I used to send out a letter as soon as we got a complaint and I could get the documentation to send out letters to people, but people are responding to the email. So the survey was good for that. So we are also talking about trying to improve our email list. And if we could really push to anyone you know, people in the audience, if you have not signed up for our pipeline, which you just go to our homepage, and there's a link down the left-hand column of the homepage that you can sign up for our pipeline, which is our automated information application that we have. You can, you can choose which things you would like to be notified about, everything from city events to recreation to fiber. We've got quite a few options. You can select all or one, but you can also select how you would like to be notified, email or text. And we get you, we try and keep you informed that way. The nice thing about that is as, as people sign up on that, their address goes on. And then when we have centralized activity, like with our road projects that are coming up, if people signed up for that pipeline, we can go on a day or two before they're going to start a project in a particular area. We can highlight those addresses. We can send reminder emails and texts out to people, letting them know what's, what's going on. And then, of course, it's used for emergency notifications as well. So anybody that you know of that has not signed up for that, please encourage them to sign up for, for our pipeline so we can really reach out to people. Our social media is great. Natalie does a good job with Twitter and Facebook. But if we can add a little bit more communication, that always helps. That's, we're moving right along with recreation. We'll be starting into the fall sports in just a little bit. We'll start registering for flag football here in the next few days. And our spring sports are winding down and the year's half over. So questions, concerns? Thanks very much.
Thank you, Scarlett.
One of the biggest things I'll have to record is budget. We'll cover that in detail. So that's one of the biggest items. We sent out on the newsletter, but haven't really went through the citizen satisfaction. You should have received all of that. We are looking at it. It is a, it is a guide for us, kind of as feedback is a starting point. Obviously, it's not written in stone. If there's those in the, in the audience or that watch, we are able to take citizen feedback at any point. So it was just a nice way to get hundreds rather than dozens responding, get certain items. And it's a lot of, a lot of things for us to work on throughout a year. But we, we do want to have a good communication with the public and with the council. One of the, one of the other things I'm working on and administration's working on is the contracts with their internet service providers. I have contacted a number of them and have expanded our communication and just working through contract details with some of those. The Water Master Plan, RFP, after we approve the budget. If you approve that as an item, we will get ready to send that RFP out. And then we would select and have that sometime in August, July to August. One item we have applied for the CMAC, which is a air quality mitigation. The air quality mitigation, what we did is we applied for bike routes throughout the city to kind of connect us to Logan and some of the other areas. It looks like, based on, on the funding that was available and the applications that were there and the scoring we had, if, if approved at, at the next levels, the CTEC, the technical advisory, it looks like we'll get that. It'll be about $500,000 grant there. And so I think that will be a big one for us to build out. And as we did our Art Trail Recreation Master Plan, that was one of the big things that came out was bike paths. So this will, this will link three bike paths, both a north, a central, and a south, from towards the bench, not all the way on, but towards the bench down. And then it will have a long gateway drive, so it'll connect us there. So some good, good, good connections there. So anyway, other than the budget that we'll cover in much more detail, that's my report for you. If you have any questions, I'm willing to take.
Listen to Ryan. Okay. First numbered item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Providence City Council considered approval of minutes of May 19, 2021. We have a link there to the. Need a motion to approve the minutes of May 19.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes remaining.
Motion for council member Kurt. I'm second.
I'll second.
Second for council member Seeley. Questions, comments, clarifications, grammatical errors?
Yeah, I'd like to, I know we're using the abbreviated format of the minutes, which I do appreciate, but there was a discussion towards the end of the meeting just regarding the time that the meeting tends to end. I think we all remember that I initiated that discussion, that I felt like it was too late for our ability to do a good job and for the public to participate, because those are ending well after 10 o'clock at night. So I would at least like that noted in the minutes. That was notable enough discussion. I'd like to make sure that's there. Thank you.
Take that, Jessica. So, anything else? I did not see any data. Hey, council members, anything if you want to. We have motion on the table, approval of minutes of May 19. Go. Maybe?
I, with the amendment.
With the amendment, as requested by council member Paulson. Okay.
Aye.
Any days? Okay, we're good to go. Let's move on to public comments. Fortunate citizens may express their views to the city council on issues within the city's jurisdiction. City council accepts comments by email, Providence, cityutah@gmail.com, and by text, 435-752-9441. We're also live streaming this on YouTube. So I know we have an audience out there that they, they want to submit a comment. All right. Scarlett, I've got a comment that is on one of the agenda items, so I'll save it for Scarlett, do we have any, before I go to the audience, do we have any public comments by text or email?
None.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to comments from members of the audience. But before I start, I do want to mention that the legal record of this meeting is a voice recording. And so what we ask people that want to speak is if they raise their hand, I'll recognize them, come up to the microphone here. And without speaking into the microphone, whatever you say will not be part of the public record. So we encourage you to, to speak when you get in front of the microphone. If you're short, pull it down. So if you shout something out in the middle of the meeting, the recording won't pick it up. So I urge you to come up here, but then when you do, please introduce yourself, give us your name for the record. Well, on that note, normally what we do is if there's an issue that's on the agenda, we ask to hold those comments for that agenda item, and we will, we'll invite members of the public to come up and speak. We have two items we previously held a public hearing on that we will get to later. This is for issues that are not on the agenda, that members of the public would like to comment on. You're welcome to come up. I hear, I see one hand. So we'll entertain comments from the audience. Come on up, Chad. Give us your name.
Chad, I'm a citizen of Providence. And I've stood at this pulpit a few times and said things that were hopefully constructive. But today I wanted to come and express my appreciation to a city council, to a mayor, to a city manager, Scarlett, for the transparency that I see that has developed or become enhanced, and for the hard work that you're doing. A lot of times we come and complain, you get to hear our complaints from this pulpit, but today I just wanted to come and say thank you for all the hard work that I know that you're doing. I'm grateful for a council that had foresight to recognize the need for a city manager. I'm grateful for a city manager that came with lots of good experience and is working hand in hand with the existing folks that are here. I see rent money coming in that we would have missed possibly in the past. I see us making great strides, and I just came to say thank you. You're doing a wonderful job at keeping the peace, the secure feeling that we have here in Providence and helping us keep it green, even though we're in my favorite period. I always say there's four seasons here in Providence. There's almost winter, there's winter, there's still winter, and then there's road construction. And that certainly will be the road construction basis.
Oh, just great.
So thank you. That's all I have to say. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chad. We've got, we've got 20 blocks of road construction. Our city manager has promised that the, the firm that's been hired is, has a lot of equipment, a lot of experience. This is not as, most of these streets and blocks are not as invasive as we might otherwise think, and they, they intend to be moving on after they've completed a block with.
You like to underpromise and overdeliver, so maybe roll it back and.
Just wait.
Just wait. It's going to get worse. It's going to get worse. But they'll do the best they can.
And our fiber project is. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it. It's always nice to hear positives. Most of the visitors we get are different. Any other comments from the public here, the audience? You're welcome to come up. Raise your hand. Be happy to hear from you.
Hi, Pam Flicker. I talked to both Josh and Mayor last month, and the meeting went well after 10, it went well after 11. And I'm a proponent for going back to twice a month meetings. I just don't think it's as productive, well, as you said, time-wise for that long of an evening for the council to be productive, but especially for me as a citizen. And I was home on Zoom, and it still was never-ending. And, and I also think it gives some continuity with planning and zoning and city council. If every Wednesday night, there's a meeting at City Hall, and I think that would be my preference. And so I wanted to ask you, Mayor, what, where do we go from here?
Well, I'm sure the council will consider your request. We've had that discussion since the last council meeting. I think your email got passed on as well. It'll have to be an agenda item for the council to pass a resolution to have in the council meeting. The council does have the option of saying, we have an agenda item that's going to be timely, that we get on this sooner rather than wait till next month, or it's a lengthy item, let's have a workshop or something. There's no reason the council can't do that. But if we're going to add another regular council meeting, it'd have to be on our agenda. We have to have a resolution.
So who does that? Can you do that?
So I can put it on the agenda for, for next council meeting in July.
Okay.
Or the council members can request an item being on the agenda. I think it's a worthy discussion.
Even with, even with things like workshops, when there's something that you anticipate it's going to go a lot longer, even just a regular meeting, they, it seems like they're closer to three hours than, you know.
Or four. Or four.
Yeah, well. Last week, or last month, five, but I mean, just on, you know, to spread out four hours over two. Two hour meetings is a lot.
One of the things that Scarlett mentioned is there are twenty land use applications in house right now. So from our agenda, you can see we have a busy schedule. Well, it used to be once or twice a year, we might have a petition from a developer. And now we have two or three every council meeting, every month. So. A lot to consider.
Okay, well, we'll look forward on next month's agenda.
Can I make a quick comment?
Be persistent.
So, um, I've been coming to city council for about five years regularly and I've been on for almost four. Even when we had them twice a month, we, there was no such thing as a two hour council meeting. Um, my experience. Um, has been if we have a council meeting, what happens is we just end up chatting and talking and. Guests being brought in. And so even when we were having council meetings twice a month, we were regularly going. After ten thirty at night.
I'm gonna add to that. Uh, this is a public meeting. We have an in-person meeting as well as now we're live on video and I assume you watch this on video. I assume the number of other people. There are certain things that have to come before the council. So, so here, here's the point. Um, there's certain things that council has to deal with. It's not something the staff can make a decision. It has to. That's the first thing. The second thing is we have an obligation of the public to be transparent as. Uh, Mr. Checkett's brought up, part of being transparent is having a public discussion and public dialogue. Uh, it's not show up and, and watch his vote. It's, it's discuss and bring out our particular. Um, position and observations of a particular issue. Um, and we owe it to the public for them to view that dialogue, discussion and deliberation. And sometimes we go late. And that comes with the job. And I've been doing this for twelve years. Showing up at council meeting and planning commission meeting. That, that's my two cents. Thank you for your input, Hannah. Anyone else like to address the council?
Okay, Ramona Lucadina, good one, so, and Trode. Um, I, I just need clarification. So there's gonna be public comment for each agenda item, is that correct?
Limited. It's not a public hearing, but.
Yeah.
Uh, it's planning commission holds a public hearing and they invite comments, but they don't invite comments when they go through an agenda. The council, we have traditionally invited comments on a limited basis. We limit the time. And it's not open to everyone here. And what we ask, and I was at the planning commission meeting, if there's something that, that you brought up of. Before. Please share with us any comments that you didn't bring up previously or brought up to the city. Concerns about the rezone or whatever your issue is, so.
So it has to be new information?
Right, we.
Even though these people didn't hear.
We listen, we listen to the. So we don't, we don't go to the planning and zoning, but we're totally impressed to the.
So you listened to, oh, you did, okay. So it's not just the letter that comes from that.
True.
Person. Okay, okay.
We were asked to all watch it and some of us watched it live.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else? Don't see any hands raised, so let's go ahead and close the, uh, the comment portion. We have three public hearings. Uh, this evening, um, I'll just go ahead and read which ones they are. We have a vacation of a right of way on third east. Uh, we're holding a public hearing on that. Uh, budget adjustment for. Uh, twenty twenty one, uh, twenty twenty one concludes the end of this month, June thirtieth is the end of fiscal year. And we have a public hearing on the twenty twenty two fiscal year budget, which begins July first, the end is June thirtieth. Of twenty twenty two. Those are our public hearings. So, uh, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. On item number two, I'll read this whole thing. Vacation is right away on three hundred east. Providence City Council will hold a public hearing regarding. A request to vacate right away on or about three hundred east, general area one fifty two south to one hundred south. Scarlett, could you give us an outline and Ryan, do you have?
You have the applicant and his engineer in the audience too, if you want more technical questions. Providence City, long ago, far away, back in the eight, early, or I mean, the late eighteen hundreds when they were laying out the town. They generally laid out ninety nine foot right aways. And some of our streets continued that practice and some of them didn't. And three hundred east is one that has kind of hodgepodgeed a little bit. And so the applicant is. Um, there's been a couple of times that we've actually vacated some right away along three hundred east because it was the ninety nine foot right away. Um, measuring wasn't as. Precise. Or years ago, as it is now, our tools for, for laying out houses and determining. Property lines and everything have improved, but over the years, um, in the early years, some of the homes were actually built to the right away, things like that. And so we've taken some of those things into consideration and, and we have vacated right away occasionally. Um, this is a case where the applicant is. In their statement, they have said the buildings to the north encroach on the ninety nine foot right away. The south, the right away was like vacated for parcels zero two, one, one, three and zero, zero, seven, two. Zero, two, one, one, three, or excuse me, zero, two, one, one, three, zero, zero, seven, two, parcel zero, two, one, one, three, zero, zero, nine, two. And zero, two, one, one, three, zero, zero, seven, four. The vacation left a sixty six foot right away. Proposed vacation of the right away would provide, provide consistency in the size of the right away. Um, our standard road profile now is sixty six feet right away. So they're just asking us to. Consider vacating down to the sixty six foot right away. Um. I think that's probably enough to introduce it for public comment. And then if you have further questions, you can either ask the applicant. Or I'm happy to come back up if you need me to.
So in a nutshell, this. Vacation. Ends up with a sixty six foot right away, which is our standard right of way profile.
Correct. Yep, that's correct.
Clarification, the council needs on this before. All right, um, any, anyone who'd like to comment on the, um, the right of way? Vacation, city is giving up. Uh, any questions, Scarlett? Uh, you're welcome to come up podium here and speak to the council. Okay, I don't see any hands raised. This issue. Council, anything you want to comment on, on this? Don't hear anything, don't see anything on the item number two to vacate the right of way on three hundred east.
I would be interested in hearing from the property owner on, on what his plan is, but would that be better? Comes up later on the agenda?
We can ask for an explanation. It's, uh, it's item number ten, so we're gonna be.
Would you rather comment now or wait?
I think she wants you to comment now. Yeah. And some of the audience members might also be interested. We need Tony Johnson. Uh, really no magic to it. It's just a, a lot that we want to. Uh, wanted to describe that, as we became aware of the issues that were there, the streets on the north side and south side. There was some opportunity to request the right of way adjustment, that it would just provide some additional, um, buffer. For, for the lot. We want to put a home down towards the lower section of that. Yeah, so, so that's, that's it. Council, any question? Let me straighten my phone. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. All right. Council, any other?
You have to subdivide the lot first of. Now it's personal zero two six.
It's just, it's just a strip along the road.
No, but to build another home, you'll have to subdivide. Nope. Or is it already divided?
It's already an independent parcel. If they just want to put one home on there, they'd be fine. If they want to do something different, then they would have to come through.
It just makes the setbacks.
It just.
Great.
Yep, it evens up the road and then it allows them to start their setback from the, uh, new. Right away line, so.
Okay, anything else? All right, let's go ahead and move on. I'll close the public hearing on the item number two. On the right of way. So number one, item number three, budget adjustments through twenty twenty one. Uh, year end, June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty one budget, Providence County, Providence City Council will hold a. Public hearing to provide an opportunity for anyone interested to comment on the twenty twenty one budget adjustments for. The current fiscal year, soon to end, the end of this month. This is a public. Uh, public hearing. Scarlett, do we have any text messages, email comments?
Nothing new at this time.
Okay, all right. Ryan, do you want to give us two cents on this?
Sure.
This is a standard year end process where we go through budget adjustments. To bring everything in line with our actual revenue and expenditures. Happens every year, June, in June.
Correct. So one thing on this one, um, we have had some of the revenue items. Uh, and so you'll see that, uh, that the annual budget, so this is what the budget was. This is what the current year actual has been. And so this is the amending to the budget to match to the actual. Um, so at that point, then it has an amount change. So on the revenue, I would point out the taxes received by county, this is a, a flow through, so we have a revenue and an expense that will match. Um, so we have an increase there. There was more, more revenue that came in, but, but it does flow directly to the county that way. Um, so you'll find that there will be an offset adjustment to an expense account. Um, so this is the, uh, Staliker allotment is the same. It's a pass through, it goes through us. Uh, to the county sheriff. Rest of these are revenue ones. And then on the expenses, and this is where we, whether we overspend or underspend. Um, so we did have, this is the pass through that I just talked about, from the taxes received by county. So this is that same amount and all other departments. Um, came in or, or expect to come in at or below budget on their expenses. And so that would be the, the offset entry to balance our budget would be a transfer to the general fund. Which we would then use that transfer. Um, that is what we fund the large road projects with and things like that. Um, and so that ends the, uh, general fund. The other adjustments. Um, we did have a overrun in our, uh, on our sewer master plan. We added extra meters, uh, three extra meters. And so we did have an overrun in that, uh, expected. And so we would adjust the budget in there. Um, but as we, as we've talked before, we were trying to identify. Um, problems in the plant, problems in the, in the sewer, um, flow and, uh. I think we have some of the, some of the ideas, um, for people. If they have a sump pump that, uh, flows in the high water table, it's probably not happening this year. But, uh, if they live in a high groundwater and they're using a sump pump, um, that's not allowed to go into the sewer. Um, if they have a sewer cleanout in their front yard, uh, that has a broken cap, we ask that they replace it. Um, anytime that the residents can reduce the flow of, of clean water through. Through our sewer system or irrigation water, if we can reduce that flow through this sewer system, it will save us money. Um, but we are trying to identify the question that I've been asked and I don't have an answer for. Is how that results of that, those, uh, meters, uh, the reading of that has come. We're still waiting for our engineer to respond to that. So, um, that hasn't come back. Uh, we did implement a wastewater treatment. Uh, impact fee and that is, um, so we will have paid, we expect that amount to be about four hundred and fifty eight thousand. Uh, for the year. And at that point, we have seen a fairly large amount come through that. Um, and so we expect that, that that will need to be adjusted. Last year, uh, we only saw one impact fee. Um, so that's a, that's the amount that we flowed through to Logan to build their, um, sewer treatment plant. We just didn't know how much to project that. Um, so that will be the adjustment with the sewer. Uh, other than that, that is the adjustment. So, um. Realistically, everything expense wise, the staff did a great job keeping within their budget. Um, and some of the things, you know, the pass through and the, and the, uh, impact fee. And the sewer, um, sewer meters to, to further investigate. That's really what our budget adjustment's about. And, uh, so I take questions or the, or however you want to handle the public hearing on that one.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead and open up to the public. Uh, comment, this has to do with budget adjustments for the current fiscal year, uh, as we close out the year. Anyone like to comment, please raise your hand. See no hands raised. Any further from the council? All right, let's go ahead and close out the, uh, public hearing on that item. Item number four. This is twenty twenty two Providence City budget. Providence City Council will hold a public hearing. To provide an opportunity for anyone interested to comment on the estimates of revenue and expenditures or any item thereof in the final budget. Of any fund, general capital project, water, sewer, stormwater, secondary water and fiber, uh, before action is taken. Go ahead and open up the, uh, public hearing on this. Um, Ryan, you want to introduce this?
Yes.
We had a flavor of it the last council meeting, uh, for the benefit of the public.
Yes, it, it has been, um, published. Uh, most of it was, was public before the last council meeting. We didn't get a lot of time to discuss it. Um, so I will spend a little bit more time, uh, going through the detail. Um, so anyway, what we do is, uh, there is some. Summary items that we base our budget on. Um, and so that is our budget executive summary. Uh, we take an approach to, uh, to budget as close to, uh, the expected revenue and expenses as we can. And, uh, we determine those levels through looking through historical, um, data. So we go back ten years to look at, at historical data and then be with each of the departments, not just the department head, but each of the department and. And most of the employees. Um, and we evaluate line by line, um, each of the different areas that, that. That we may have and, and then we look at that, um, and we will take in, and this budget will include. Um, incorporating each of the different master plans, uh, that have been adopted and, uh, and their capital improvement plans. Um, so overall, we expect the health insurance cost will rise by eight percent. We came into the PHP. Uh, fund last year and generally speaking, they have a set, um, amount in that range. Uh, but we don't renew that until January, so we won't see a, um, we won't know for sure. Uh, all of the increase there, but that's their expectation. Uh, we are expecting a cost of living increase at three percent. Um, this is based on the consumer price index and, and other, uh, factors that were available at the time. Um, and, and like entities, we are continuing, um, to increase. We are continuing to increase based on the salary study and we do have projected an additional, um, two to three percent. Depending on the area to be able to help get us in. to be able to help get us into line with our salary study that we had. And we brought everybody, as you recall, we brought everybody to the minimum of the pay range, but didn't have much in it for the work experience. And so, this will continue to rise and bring that in line. So, eventually, we can come to the median of the pay ranges for all of our employees. So, we're working towards that, but we are recognizing that it is a, it is a step process. And we're doing that within the budget and the ability that we have. This is, this is a carryover. This has been three years. We have had because of the pay for the mayor and council is in the bottom, I believe 5%, but I'd have to calculate that of the salary survey. We have been trying to phase that increase for mayor and council in over the last two years. We had 5% increases each year. And the discussion last year on the budget was that we would make the the larger adjustment after the election of new councils. So, it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't go into effect until January 1st. And so, that is why we delayed that implementation, so we haven't made any real adjustment for the salary adjustment. Because we, because the discussion was that we'd do that when the new term started, instead of, instead of raising your own rate, you'd raise the future rate of a, of a, of a term, and then people could run based on that rate. I have a, some additional information on that one, come to it. So, just as summary, most revenue is expected to decline by 2%, sales tax by my eight. The B and C, which is classifications. B and C are both classifications of roads. So, these are, are money we get from the state. We expect that as we grow and have more roads, we increased that by about 3%. Property tax is expected to grow because of new construction. But as we've discussed, we are doing a reduction in property tax. And I'll go through real briefly on some of these sheets much quicker that way. But we are expecting a reduction in both rate and actual revenue from property tax. We are working to try to bring that tax rate within the median. Not last, but the year before, after the tax increase, we were the highest in the valley. We are expected not to be the highest with this budget. And, and within the next couple of years, we'll, we'll be right in the median. And so, we'll come back from that, from that peak. Some of that is based on growth and other taxes that have been adjusted. So, this will be our largest property tax decrease in the past 10. Generally, we maintain that, but this is a, this is an actual drop in property taxes. So, anyway, I talked about that one. Most expenses are expected to rise by the 2%, depending on, on the different, different expenses. The rescue plan, we are expected, based on that, that was passed by the the federal government. We're expected to get 867,749. That will come over two years. That has been included in the budget projections. We are looking for new park property, sorry. Hopefully, nobody saw that. Just, just wasn't, that wasn't the, that wasn't the work you were looking for. So, we're looking to acquire new park property. We are looking, we'll, we'll look to build about 40 pickleball courts or pickleball courts in four parks this year. There will actually be five courts and four parks. At least, that's our anticipation. We'll implement various park, trail and recreation master plan items. We'll have the transportation master plan work to accomplish a sewer master plan. Downtown streets, we'll, we talked about that, but about 20 blocks we've budgeted for in the coming year. And we'll implement the updating the city fleet. We have a fairly old fleet. And the median vehicle that we have is 15 years old. So, keep in mind, we've bought a few, but the average and median age of the city vehicle is over 15 years old. That's old, and we, we need to make some progress towards that fleet. So, we have some, what's our oldest one, Rob?
Fifty?
We have a 1949.
1949 is the... So, in 1949, we still use it, correct? We still use the, we still use the tractor, but it's, it's within our equipment, so. Just keep you, keep in mind, we do have some fairly old equipment and vehicles. So, culinary water, we do have a few of those projections as well. And so, we're looking for a water master plan. Eventually, we'll look to expand the connection on the sewer underneath the road and then a stormwater master plan. So, anyway, that, that is our, our executive summary, and let me just go through just each page really quickly in the, in the 10, 20 second. But if the public wants more detail, I have a lot. And I'm a nerd in this area, so if you want to go in real detail, come into my office. You, and so, I'm a real nerd on the budget, so apologize if it's more than you wanted. So, organizational chart, we have how that, how that flows down. And so, then we have the organization of the, of the funds and how we have government funds versus enterprise funds. Government funds, the primary tax rev, the primary revenue for government funds comes from taxes. Primary revenue from enterprise funds is charged for services. So, those are the difference there. We had a goal-setting discussion and, and meeting the first of this year, and I have summarized the goals that the council and I had discussed. And, and those are here present and how we're accomplishing and the status of those at this stage in the process. So, the hard numbers here in the budget. I have presented for historical years. The current year budget that you're approving and the forecast for the next four years. So, this is a nine-year budget outlook. Yes, I have forecasted out that part. And to, you know, not the penny, I don't show that, but good. So, anyway, we look at it by funds. It requires our our general fund to be balanced. You will see that we will build a balance inside of our Fund 45, which is our capital projects fund. So, we'll build some of that and, and spend on, on road projects as it comes. And so, we will do that. And then, starting with Fund 51, these are our different enterprise funds, and they, so water fund, sewer fund. So, anyway, we go through each one of those and how they will project out. And then, we even have our fiber fund at the bottom. Wage adjustments. We, we report our wages, and so if there's anything more uncomfortable than reporting your wages to the public in a public hearing, I don't know. So, anyway, anybody else wants to do that, I'm happy to, I'd invite them to do, anyway. But the, the mayor and sour, the mayor and council the current wage, what, what it takes effect with the 5%. And then, in order to bring the the range, you know, in line with what our salary adjustment was, this would take effect after the election and, and after the new council or what new council would come on. That would take effect in July, in January 1st of 2022. So, that would be that future one, but that is the salary adjustment amounts, so. And then, our appointed, we list those, so here's mine. 3% increase administrative, what, 4% increase. Our treasury recorder, although their rate, they started mid-year with us, and that's why they're getting 2% rather than the three. It's because they started mid-year and we hired them in at the, at the market at that point. But we greatly value them. It's not, it's not about that. So, property taxes, you'll see that at this point are high. And then, we were still high, but we lowered our rate and kind of brought it in. But with this budget, we will come in right, starting into that middle range. And we're expected to stay there, so at this point, that will actually bring down both, both the rate and the revenue for that. And, and that is kind of where we'll like to stick and stay. At that point, then we'd kind of hold the rate. But we don't want it to be the high, we don't want it to be the low, so that's where property tax. It is a, it is a balance between property tax, sales tax and, and charges for services, so. Then capital, capital projects and summary, we go, I go through and project each of the different areas and project them out both individually for the next five years as well as the five to 10-year. And then, so that we can see all of what we'll spend or projected to spend over the next 10 years. This is the, the proposed trails, pathways and facility plan, so this is the bikes. Then the park, trail and recreation master plan. Same thing, five years of budget with a five to 10 projection. And these are out of the master plan. The transportation master plan will actually get most of our amount with inside of the the current, the 2025 outlook. This between now and 2025, we'll get a lot of those done with this project, so you'll see a lot of that accomplishing this year. We will set some out for the following year. But then, we have some in the 2030 and 2050 range, so we are projecting out projects all the way to 2050. Here is the updated fleets. Here's how we're proposing to, to flow that in and, and to replace and make that. So, anyway, we do have a fairly old fleet. If you look through, we do have a few new ones recently. But there is a lot of, of hole in our vehicles. Water capital improvement, it is kind of the year of what we expect to spend on capital improvements of our water funds. And I do have that for sewer, storm. The sewer is just updated, the storm, it's kind of a small amount because we don't have our master plan there. Once we do, then we'll get more capital improvement projection. And then, the secondary water, if we get to that point. And the fiber, we're expecting a three-year build-out, and so it's kind of been divided. I track sales tax. That is all the way through. So, anyway, I'm happy to take any questions and go into any more detail in any item that public would like.
Go ahead and read those in first, next message.
I just wanted to make public aware. Ryan says that he is a budget nerd. He does an incredible amount of work on the budget. And in March, he was awarded the Governor's Government Financial Officer Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which is a national award. And he took first in the nation. And he could show you this for hours. He does an excellent job, and he does a ton of analysis to stretch your dollar as you make improvements for residents of Providence. Does a phenomenal job, and he should be recognized for it.
He really, he really is a nerd. He doesn't have to look, he's definitely off the top of his head, trust me. All right, on that note, we'll invite comments from the public. We have, none that came in by email or text. So, any members of the audience like to raise your hand, come up here, ask questions. Budget questions. See the hand raised? I thought for sure we'd get a question or two. So, you're on the record. We, we know who you are, Ned.
My name is Ned Miller. I'm a resident of Providence. I was just wondering if this budget is available online?
It has been for 30 days. Yes.
I'll call the law with that.
Happy to, happy to do it, yep.
Anyone else want to comment? Please raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised, so. So, that's the third item, your public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing portion and move on. We have administrative and land use issues. We have we have two contractor awards. So, we'll go ahead with our administrative items. Yeah, an item involves the sheriff. I don't know if he's going to be here. If he was here, we'd really love that. I think we're good to go. I think we've heard from him earlier, so, so we will keep the agenda as it is. Item number five, Resolution 032, 2021 budget adjustment fiscal year-end, June 30th, 2021, the Providence Council will consider for approval, resolution approving the final budget adjustment for all funds. General fund, capital project, water, sewer, stormwater, secondary water and fiber. Well, we don't have fiber yet.
We actually do. There's not much in it because...
For fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, this is a resolution. I'm going to call for a motion on this unless the council wants to. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 032-2021 budget adjustment for fiscal year end June 30th, 2021. Motion for council member, also, do I have a second?
A second.
Second, council member, Sealy. Further discussion? Comments? All right, can I call for a vote on favor of budget adjustments for fiscal year 2021? If I can say, right?
Right.
The opposed? The opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. Item number six, Resolution 031-2021 budget fiscal year-end, June 30th, 2022, this is the upcoming fiscal year. Providence City Council would consider for adoption of resolution approving the final budgets for all funds. A general capital project, water, sewer, stormwater, secondary water and fiber for fiscal year-end in June 30th, 2022. We heard a nice, concise introduction and overview from Ryan. Any questions from the council?
I have one. Can I, should we make a motion with, with an amendment to the budget right now?
Is that okay? Yes.
I, I'd like to move that we make a motion and amend Resolution 031-2021 and approve it. I personally believe that Ryan ought to have a, a 5% raise. I, I, my opinion is, I, I'm grateful that you thought you deserved less than your staff, but personally, I think a lot of the council would agree that you'd have been exceptional this past year. And you've saved us a lot of money. You've done a great job. And it's hard to give yourself a raise, but I have, I, I see that as being well worth that additional 2%. And I'd like to make amended motion to make it a 5% raise for our city manager.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion on the have a motion on the table to approve the budget for fiscal year 2022 with an amendment to change the budget as it reads to allow a 5% versus what, 3% of the budget increase for 2022 for our city manager. I have a motion and a second. Ryan, do we have to amend this budget? Because we got, we're adding new expense, but we're not adding new revenue.
But we would reduce the transfer to the capital projects by the, by that amount. That, that's the plug figure that ends. So, that number would be affected.
So, that's our plug, the plug on it, okay. All right, I have a motion on the table and a second. Further discussion on the budget 2022? Council member Sealy has a question, yes.
Just for that budget item, someone discussing.
We can discuss anything in the budget you'd like.
I just, I just want to know exactly what I'm voting on, just that one item on the budget?
Yeah, just. The motion on the table is an amendment to adjust pay increase for city manager. Over.
Oh, okay, because that was different than my motion. I vote, I vote, I, I would, I would move that we approve the budget with that amendment. Yeah.
So, she was asking.
And I think Christina, that's what you were saying.
She wanted notes for everybody.
Just for that item?
Just for that item or the whole budget with that one adjustment?
That the raises just for the city manager, but the movement is to approve the whole budget with that.
With that one.
With that one change only.
I just wanted to bring up the discussion.
Sure.
So I had comments on the elected officials adjustment. I do think that it still needs to be adjusted. I mean, it's all the analysis. Data and have a lengthy discussion that way. But does anybody want to break it up between two years or prove that as is?
I vote that we get it done. We've had these discussions every year. So I've been on and it's. Doesn't feel good giving yourself a raise. I get that. But we are at the very low end of what other communities are getting paid. And. It'll always be uncomfortable. We're always going to get the emails that we've received. From the same people that we're receiving that from, complaining.
I think your mic's too far away for some of those in the audience.
My question would be trying to fix this long term, not just in one year. Is there, is there some sort of commission that we could put in charge of this other than the council or some sort of market? Number that we could peg it to so future councils wouldn't have to do this?
Said commission, you're not suggesting a commission on the grant money. Some other kind of.
No, I'm just referring to, I'm referring to the, I'm referring to the salaries, the council salaries here. I'm trying to figure out how this, how this could get out of the council's. Responsibility.
Only the council can make this decision. A commission, we could create a commission, but the commission has zero.
I would just say that we have done the analysis on the number. That's the number that. Right, but you have a number we pegged it.
I agree. I just don't want a future council to have to deal with the issue. I'm trying to figure out a way to solve it where this doesn't come up.
I'm guessing if we don't solve it, we might not have a future council because. People just won't. I mean, I understand that we were told through an email that this is a volunteer job. And and really, it is for the most part. But I think you'll start seeing less and less people run for public office. If they're not compensated, at least the minimum.
At least enough to buy their.
At least enough to pay for their campaign.
I don't disagree with that. I'm just trying to figure out, is there a way so future councils wouldn't have to? Is there a body that could provide that recommendation of the official or some other way to do this is what I'm wondering.
So if I might, I would expect that the staff and and we did with the council as well. So when we did this. We hired a third party that came in to make the recommendation. They they made the recommendation of where. Where the staff would be at and and council would be at. It was part of a third party. It is hired at that point and and the staff, staff works to run and I work with the with the third party. But at that point, that's, they have lots of other ones. If we. If we do like, like we would expect is is we'd have the same cost of living increases. For both staff and council. But then every five years, we would have a salary adjustment survey done to make sure we kept in line. So that's kind of the staff perspective and we would add that a commission. The mayor's right. It it it's really your guys' call on what to do.
I think I would commission a salary survey by an outside third party because exactly what Ryan has already done. So we're trying to stay competitive. I know the comment came up about hiring someone. For an open position, we hired a entry level. We need a supervisor in the water department. At the pay level, housing the way it is is probably, it's pretty difficult, but. You said every five years, the council could ask you to say, let's do this every three years or two years. An update, do a survey of where all of our employees, council members and they're.
I just wanted to know.
I mean, there's no reason we we can't as a council next year, sorry. Ryan, can we have an update we have this year? And so the outside firm can pick up where they left off and just amend it and survey the market.
I would just show if you mind. We did have a salary survey, came in and showed all of the different salaries that that this. Company does and they are the largest salary survey for cities. You can see that Providence and where we fit in the list on the mayor. And if you look and one of those offers health insurance and we do not. And then on the council or 41 and that puts us. And then one does provide health insurance. So that puts only three below us in in the range. And this was a year and a half, two years ago, almost. It was about a year and a half ago that we did. And so you'll see a lot of different ones ahead. So anyway, if that helps. You guys deserve it. So anyway, from my side, I'm I'm obviously work for you and and we'll tell you, you do a great job every time, but. So anyway, if that helps.
Any further questions, comments? Anyone want to add? 2022 fiscal year, we have adjustment to one line item only. That's a pay increase from the 3% as. As noted in the budget. All right, let's call for a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget passes. Thank you all for that. Appreciate it. Okay. Serial state line. All right. Item number seven, ordinance 009, 2021 amendment to city code 10156E, public property signs. This is an ordinance amending our city code. There's an exhibit there. Providence City Council would consider for approval and ordinance amending city code. 10156E to allow for modification of the language. And for the placement of the American flag on public property park strips. I'll give you a little background. I wrote this this ordinance to amend the code. Ryan and I had a discussion. In the part of the city we live, we have a new bishop. And his crew went out and put flags in the park strip. Which normally the city has prohibited, the city is only the city is allowed to put signage or anything. In the city right of way, which includes the park strip. So Ryan and I discussed it. I said, if we're going to keep it as it is, then we need to notify people and. So we both agreed that the flags being in the park strip as you drive down the street. Looked awesome. And we said, I said, okay, we're we're already talking about as as Tyler talked about earlier, reviewing our code for changes. What Tyler talked about is grammatical errors, formatting, cost references between different parts of our code. Also making sure our. Our, well, there's reference to state code that it's current. But the other part is, and I think Ryan said it's been since before Scarlett came to work for Providence City was the last time our. City code was reviewed. So that means over 30 years.
Just after I came, but so.
Just after, okay. So that's the last time our city code was reviewed. So it's been a while. But there is no question that some of how we operate as a city, the policies we operate under have changed. They may not be reflected in the city code as it reads. It's prudent of us to amend it. Because sometimes if we find ourselves in court, the judge looks at the mayor or the city manager and says. This is how the city operates, but your city coach is something different. And might rule against the city. So legally, it's in our best interest to keep our our code current. So. I mean, this is a minor item. It's pretty straightforward. We're allowing only American flags to be posted, not just by the board, but in in the park strip. I think that'll look great. And there's some specifications in there from from sunrise to sundown. And they have to be removed by the end of the day. So. And flag etiquette is is referenced also on there. I think it's called the feds.gov. Simple amendment. Any discussion or questions on that?
I just wanted to add one word that states the official American flag because I know there's a lot of variations that are.
That's a good point. Neighbors that have some unusual.
I just wanted to say official American flag.
We have an amendment. I haven't called for a motion yet. Any member of the public want to just weigh in on that? I figured there's some veterans here that want to say. Go for it. All right, we have. We have. We have an ordinance change. We have, we have an ordinance change to. I haven't called for, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 009-2021, the amendment adding the word official to. American flag at line 27.
I have a motion on the table. An amendment to the ordinance to add official. Council member Sealy, second. Council member, further comment, discussion, can I call for a vote? All right, all in favor of approving this ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have. We have land use, we have three land use items, two are rezones, one is to improve the. Vacated right of way. Both of these rezone petitions have been the subject of public hearings in our. Planning commission meetings. Our planning commission chair is here. Any questions of our commission chair are welcome. So let's go ahead and start with this first one, ordinance 007. 2021 rezone a parcel 021150027. Providence City Council would consider and may take action on ordinance. Authorizing the rezoning of property in the area of 1070 South, 400 East, Providence City, Utah parcel 021150027. Currently zoned as agricultural with the application of proposal requesting it become a multifamily medium. Zone. We have to also have the petitioner here who's asking for this rezone. Available to answer questions. Andy Bentley is back in the corner, so. Counsel, Scarlett, let's start out with just an intro on that and then we'll launch a discussion.
Just a really quick intro for all of the land use items. When the city staff gets these and gets everything ready to go to to the planning commission. The things that the planning commission and the city staff look at, we look at the general plan 2020. We look at state code, we look at our current city codes. And then we put together the information. The to for the public to to see. One of the things that this is, a couple of the highlights, the changes of this zone. The developer is asking for multifamily medium. It's currently zoned ag. Now, this parcel is less than a five acre piece. And so at this point in time. Whatever someone chose to do with it, they would have to come in and get a zone change because on an ag property. Excuse me, unless they intend to keep just doing what they're doing. In order to get a permit to build anything on an ag property, you have to have a minimum of five acres. So this property will at some point need a rezone, whether you do it tonight or not is yet to be determined. As I said, they're asking for multifamily medium, which is allows. Both. Single, it allows single family attached housing. And. It a. Single family attached is. Provides for ownership instead. I mean, people can buy it and then rent it out, but it's not. Someone that's going to hold the whole, own the whole complex and rent out. So it does look at ownership for single family attached housing. The things that we look at as far as the general plan go on all of these land use decisions. The key initiatives in our general planner preserve the sense of place by identifying characteristics that define Providence's unique place. Make decisions regarding stormwater and exterior water. Guided by green infrastructure and low impact development, best management practices. Consider lifecycle costs in mind when making decisions for design standards such as roadlets and more capital improvement projects. Ensure that transportation and recreation facilities accommodate a variety of transportation modes, biking, walking, riding and provide. To provide people multimodal transportation options as a lifestyle and recreation choice. Consider long term economic development impacts when making land use, transportation and other planning decisions. And encourage housing options to meet the needs of residents of all ages, income level, family size, regardless of their stage of life. So those are the, those are the key initiatives and our our vision is to guide and manage growth in a way that preserves. Natural scenery while also providing more opportunity to live, workshop and recreate in Providence. The developer's plan is to have. A senior or an over 55 community. But you have to recognize that if the zone is changed. Any of the uses that we do allow in the multifamily medium zone, which does include apartments, if that was to be changed, could be done. So one of the comments that came up. You know, from a previous public hearing or prior to a previous public hearing. Ask about development agreements. Zoning with a, on an agreement. I spoke with our city attorney. He strongly discouraged that. That's really not. What we really have to rely on when we change a zone is our existing ordinances for that zone. And if you feel like the existing ordinance is in that zone. Anything in that existing ordinance is allowed and that is allowed in that zone. If you feel comfortable with that in this area, then by all means, change that zone or make the change. But if you don't feel comfortable with the things that are allowed in that zone. Regardless of what type of plan is presented at this point in time, because it it's not an official. The plan itself is not an official submittal. Then I would say that you would really need to think hard and long about changing the zone. Because you are changing to what the ordinance will allow, not to a particular plan.
One of those options would be to add a zone for 55 and older.
If we want.
So it would limit it to, so this multi-family medium and all the options it allows. Opens the door to everything.
Correct. So if you wanted to have a new zone, if you wanted to refine what your your thought is for for some type of a zone for active adult. Or senior communities, then. You can direct and and staff can work on that and work with planning commission and start putting some ideas together for that type of the zone. But right now, that's not an option. Right now, the options are the existing zones that we have on our on our books. So as the mayor said, Andy Bentley is here. And he was very gracious during the flooding commission meeting to answer, answer comments and questions. So.
Can I ask you a question before you dance?
Sure.
I just wonder what other options do we have besides adding a zone? Is there? What, what can we do to? The process to make it so that. The things that are proposed are a little more concrete.
Concrete. Well, really, that is the ordinance. We need to change zones, create zones, more zones. Create more detail within our ordinance that we have, but it would, it would take an ordinance change to to have a more detail. I mean, if you wanted to create a zone with a very limited scope, you could do that. It makes it a little bit difficult. Sometimes when you get into development, you don't, you don't want too broad because you you don't want to. Open the barn door, so to speak, but yet you don't want so narrow that as. Products change a little bit, they can't, you know, that you're constantly changing ordinances to keep up with with market demands. So. So it's a, it's a delicate balance you have to look at, but but right now our ordinances are a little bit broader than what you. Are a little bit broader than what you probably would like on this.
Multifamily medium is called units per acre.
Correct.
They could, according to our ordinance and, and as far as. We know, and not that the developer would be dishonest, but that means they could do townhomes at twelve units an acre.
Or they.
That's what we would be approving.
Right.
With this zone change right now as it reads.
Or they could do multifamily. Townholds are single family attached, the way we defined them in the, in the ordinance. They could do multifamily, they could do an apartment complex at twelve units per acre.
I have another question, so down where Chapman is doing their fifty five and older. That is a single family high.
Yes.
Because those units are not attached.
No.
They're on very small lots.
Yes.
But that's a single family high zone, that other fifty five and older. So the fact that these are attached.
And that zone allows five point five units per acre. And it does allow for some single family attached if someone chose to do that, but, but you've got a different.
Family high allows for some like twin homes.
But you can't increase the density. So you can only have five point five units per acre, whether you do it with a. Four unit townhome or with four individual. Lots, but you can't go over five point five units. And I should, I need to say too, for the, for the council and the audience, that's per what we call net acre. You have to subtract out roadways, any dedication that's going to go for. Public right of way has to be, so in this piece, if there's. Four acres, if. Three quarters of an acre is taken up with roadway dedication to improve four hundred east and. I believe it's four seventy east on the east side and then got the road within the development itself. If that's three quarters of an acre, then the developer's density of five point five is based on three point two five acres, not four acres. So, which is kind of a big deal sometimes, particularly on larger acreage pieces. The other questions?
One more, Ryan, you might know. So have other cities that you know of, do they have a zone for fifty five and older? I mean, because that doesn't. I mean, would it just make sense to keep our zoning the way it is with the? The density of the way it is, I mean, I, I understand that. Anyway, I'm just curious about that.
I, I have not seen others that have that, that firm, but like, like Scarlett said, there is that balance between having something. So. So specific that you never use it and we have zones that almost, I mean, because of our, some of our zones. They're so restrictive in that it, it becomes hard to fit it, we're, we're changing the. The. The mixed use, so we're changing mixed use in order to kind of make it more that you could, and one thing Scarlett didn't mention, but, but with. With the Champon one that, that we talked about, the fifty five and over. With the PUD, they did get a. A bump in, in density, so you can incentivize certain things as far as a. If it is this, then, then we give something else, you can add something like that as a. Part of the cafeteria of options. But to have a specific zone, then you have to look, where are you going to zone that? And then you, then the next. The next stage of that becomes, well, then now are you spot zoning and having things that it's one zone that has no attachment to anything else around it. So, so you, you risk some of that balance. I probably wouldn't recommend getting it so specific, it's fifty five and over. But if, if you want a, a benefit or, or caveat, you could add that some.
The other problem is it might be if the flag was fifty five and over.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying to do it, I was just curious. When you're saying adding a zone to me, that's what you were talking about.
Well, that is.
And I don't know that that's the answer.
But, but my, my thought on this is, I think it feels like, I, I totally agree with this conversation and it needs to be had and. We can do it, but it feels like it's a deviation from the item on the agenda, which is to vote on what we have today, and I, and I don't like taking up the, that is just me, I don't like taking up the whole meeting. You know, talking fifteen minutes about something that would be a wonderful agenda item for a future meeting.
And it probably needs to be put on the.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's what I, that's, that was really my point, what you need to be comfortable with is the existing multifamily medium zone. If you're comfortable with the, the uses, the lot sizes, the density, if you're comfortable with that, then yes. By all means, change, change it, if you're not comfortable with the entire. What is allowed in multifamily medium, then that's when you maybe think a little differently, so. Thank you for your time.
I, I've got. List of people that signed in to, to speak. I've got four names here, I think I can read everybody's writing. I see one name that was not at the public hearing, Kurt, are you tending to speak on this particular? You don't need to. Not any of the other agenda items either. I know Ramona wanted to speak, and I'm sure you want to speak on this item. Tom Singleton, I know Tommy talked about it, I see another name. I think I read right, Del Ray, Cyril. I've got it right, I love that, and Robert Cruz. Okay, so I've got four people that want to speak on this. You're welcome to come out, Robert. I think Robert lives right adjacent to the parcel of property.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council, my name is Rob Cruz. My wife and I, we live immediately east of the northeast corner of this property. And first of all, I'd like to say we're not against development. You know, we knew when we moved here that that would be developed at some point. And one thing that we would love, and I know of many of the residents, at least on four seventy east, is a full road. We have half a road right now, so there are things that we like about what's being proposed, or just other things that. We have concerns with, and I'm not going to go through everything I shared since obviously you listened to it or you watched it. But I have a few things that I like to just share additional, so I want to. Thank Ryan Snow and Scarlett for the considerable time that they've spent with me over the last few weeks to better understand. This proposal as well as how the city operates and the various plans that we have. I spent today going through the general plan. And what I really picked up from there is consistency. And that we have various plans, we have the parks plans, the stormwater plan, transportation plans, but we want all these things to be consistent. And I just want to read a few. Parts of those, of that general plan, one is. The general plan, it's a policy document that is used to help guide the city in its future growth and change. The general plan aims to map and communicate Providence City's features. Based on a shared vision of the community, the ideas of the general plan provide a means to improve the community character. And quality of life for residents, increased property and business development opportunities, and address city goals. The general plan is an advisory document that provides a basis for informed future decision making. The general plan encourages consistency by establishing a framework for decision making, both in the short and long term. The plan provides guidance to landowners, current and future business owners and residents. And understanding of the long term vision of the city is needed so people can make decisions regarding their land incompetence and understanding the parameters. Of planning policies and why they're in place. City leaders and citizens have stated that they wish to preserve the character of Providence while at the same time ensuring landowners to exercise their development rights. And this is my own side note, as I look at that, to me, that does not say. Landowners have a right to develop their land however they want at the expense of existing landowners, which means homeowners. And then who's supposed to use this plan? It's everyone, it's you, it's staff, people who want to develop the community, existing residents. It's for all of us to have a better understanding of what we, we want for our community. And then under Providence tomorrow, it says. As Providence enters into the next chapter of its city's history, the question is, what do we hope to become? Preservation of the qualities that make Providence a community and place where people wish to live and raise their families. And can only be achieved through careful planning, ensuring that clear guidance and policies are in place and that growth. Guide growth in a positive, sustainable direction. Like I said, people come into the community with expectations and we expect. Plan, undeveloped land around us is going to be developed at some point. But we hope that it will be developed similar to what we have around us or that it's in our program. Development for what, where it's located. And we have concerns with. Mainly the, what this could become if somebody changes the plan along the way, rather than having. A senior center. Which may or may not be appropriate there based on other factors, but having condos or apartments and that. The developer, Mr. Bentley's done a great job with the land just immediately to the south there, he's put in those half acre lots. And it's, I think it's been a benefit to the community. And what we'd like to see is similar half acre, quarter acre lots, I'm on a quarter acre lot, I think. You know, that would work really well for the citizens there. Also, when we come in to, or residents come into a city and we buy a home, we chunk down a lot of money for that home. And we look at that as an investment. We're hoping that our home will build value so that we can use that. Either to buy a new home if we decide to move, or if we stay there long term, which we hope to do. That it's a, a bank account for us, that someday that we can use if we have to. To pay for medical bills and other things that we may. Need to do. So we just hope that as you go through this important decision here. That you factor all these things in there. And know that, you know, we. Who live around there, we're citizens and we're happy that we're here in Providence, or we would have left. And Providence has a lot of great things and I hope that we. Keep the character of the community that's up there. And a side note, I want to say. Like, we're up on four seventy east and if you know, before you get up to four hundred, there's that big hill. And one of the things I talked about is the appropriateness of a senior center up there because. Emergency services are so far away to get up there. I can testify that early season storms and even sometimes late season storms. Before the road crews are able to get out there are very treacherous. I have driven up there when we first moved here. And got halfway up the hill. And slid all the way down. To the state center below that, and that is quite an experience if you've never driven backwards. So. That's all I want to say, other than I really appreciate the time of the planning commission and their members and the, and the staff and everyone who. Has put thorough thought into this and I appreciate the developer, I understand where he's coming from. I just don't think this is the development for this location, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Del Ray.
I wanted to address item number nine.
Oh, okay.
But can I ask a quick question, can I just, can we just have a raise of hands who's here for this? Agenda item? Thank you.
Tom Singleton. Oh, before I go on, can we keep it to three minutes? Sorry, Rob, I meant to say that.
Mayor, how about thirty seconds?
Take the L.
I was not aware when I signed my name that the council had listened to the remarks that you made last week. I have no other remarks to make other than what I hear month, last month, I should say.
So doing our homework.
So I thank you.
Thank you. And then Ramona wanted to speak as well. Ramona, you wanted to comment on this? I know you have a lot to say, Ramona.
Well, I just, I won't go ad nauseam like I did during the planning meeting, but it's, it, it's just the same things, I think it's so inconsistent. Where you have a general plan that says that that's a conservation area, it's our deer winter range up there on the bench. Talk about keeping quality of life, what's Providence, it's, well, it used to be orchards up there and deer winter range. And so I think it's just really inconsistent to. Put. A multifamily. Unit up there, and if people don't think that that with all the traffic, that it's not going to affect my property. And the road in front of me, I mean, that's just unreal. So. Scott Finley, who is an economist who spoke at the planning meeting, also pointed out in, in the studies they've done that where you put. High density, you all heard this if you've watched the video, high density housing on the outskirts of small rural towns. The property values decreased by seventeen to twenty percent, or if you put them in an area where they ought to be, like downtown. In a nearer commercial area where people will be going to shop and. Whatever other people do in commercial areas. I mean, it just makes a lot more sense that you aren't having the driving back and forth. And all the traffic, all the noise that creates. And just the environmental issues there, there's noise pollution, there's pollution, pollution. And, you know, I, I think. We aren't being realistic with the fact that. We have ozone problems in the summer, we have our particulate matter. Issues in the winter, now it's becoming obvious this year that we have drought issue. And how is that being addressed? It's not. Telling people to not water their lawns enough. I, I don't think it's going to, you know, solve the problem. So I think you have to look at the big picture that there's a lot more involved than. And I understand the summers, it's their property and they want to develop it and make some money from the property. But there's, there's a lot of bigger issues that go along with that too, and it's just like Mr. Cruz said, I just think it's. You know, I love the idea of. A senior housing area, but it's just the wrong place for that project, it's just the wrong location. Okay, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Anyone else like to comment?
There was, Scott Finley wrote a letter and I don't know.
Yes.
I was just going to say that, so go ahead.
I, I have two emails, I only have one, the individual, and the other one is addressed to all the council members as well. I have one. That's council member Paulson mentioned, he has to have it read. The council meeting, which we typically do, is Scott Finley, who's a. Grandview neighbor, and I'll go ahead and read this, so it's on the record, here in Providence City, council members. My name is Scott Finley, I live in Grandview, Grand, Providence, I would have liked to have attended tonight's meeting in person. I have been suffering today from coughing and sneezing that I believe are related to seasonal allergies, but out of abundance of caution. I felt it would be just to not attend in person and say, communicate my thoughts electronically regarding the proposed rezone of the property, I sincerely hope my. Comments will not be discounted just because I've not attended in person for said reasons, I also want to thank you for. Your service in the often thankless positions. Of public service. Scott did speak at the public hearing, so. As some of you are, I'm a PhD in economics. My professional occupation is professor of economics at Utah State University, one of my areas of. Scientific expertise includes advanced spatial statistical techniques to study the impact on property values. Local sales tax bases that occur because. Of changes to zoning ordinance and land use policies, particularly in. Small towns and municipalities, I've been serving as editor in chief of the peer reviewed. Scientific journal named Public Finance Review that serves as an outlet for communicating critical scientific findings and related topics. Here are my thoughts on the rezone. He's got. One, two, three, and A, B, C, D. We, you know, go ahead and read these, sorry. He's got two pages.
He's got two pages. I'll try to stay on the three. Except my computer isn't operating. Yeah. Uh, I want to commend the developer for the work done previously on adjacent properties in the south that are zoned currently as single family. Largely, those properties have really added to the character of the area. Will have many spillover benefits that may need neighbors and a local tax base. Scientific evidence suggests higher density developments can be beneficial to small towns, municipalities if the higher density are located close to the cores and centers of small towns and cities because infrastructure exists to support high density developments like load from road arteries, public transportation access to commercial services and stores, and access to emergency medical services. It's my view that application of reseal to this four acre property of multi-family medium, density is very problematic for several reasons. Uh, he has A, B, C, D, and E. Uh, A, if the city of Providence behaves like other small towns and municipalities in such a rezone, it's to a significantly higher density relative to what currently exists in the adjacent surrounding area will likely trigger severe damage to property values, wealth of residents in the south bench. Damage is estimated to extend out over one half mile radius from the zone property with spatial decline K in the damages. This is because the higher density development located from, of a far periphery of the city as opposed to being located close to the core of the city because it is incongruent to surrounding zoning based on the scientific results, scientific evidence including, uh, based on one of my own published scientific studies funded by the US Department of Agriculture. Scientific estimates for the magnitude of damages, uh, that would be incurred range from about 17 to 26% of property values. Uh, item B, such losses of property values incurred by residents, the surrounding area would be effectively transferred given the pocket of the developer withstands a profit significantly from getting his partial re, parcel property rezone as an economist, very much in favor of businesses and developers making profits as long as the rules in the planning field are not changed. That's a wealth redistribution is the means in which businesses and develop, developers earn their profits stated in a different way. If the rezone is approved, the developer will make a lot of money. The developer's profits will have been effectively financed by the losses in surrounding property values. The city council want to pay a supporting role in wealth redistribution from the middle and hiring of families, uh, over to already wealthy developer, uh, C. Uh, regarding the issue of procedural fairness, many property owners, adjacent properties made the decision to locate builder futures under existing set of rules, uh, for example, families like the Shores, the Chris, Smiths, and many others have located this developer's ongoing development in the south with single family large zoning site for the existing homeowners living in the other adjacent developments, the single family residential zoning. Uh, parentheses there, back again, starting. Uh, now these families made the important financial decision, purchasing a home under a specific set of expectation zoning and now these families are under threat of having a financial run pulled out from underneath them. It strikes me as philosophically unfair for the strings of local government to be privately pulled to the benefit of, uh, of one or a few, but at the cost of many. D, I already have serious concern about traffic flows and infrastructure, existing undeveloped land across the south bench is initially developed out as single family properties only. Uh, it is my opinion to approve of higher density developments in this area will exacerbate the traffic problem in the south bench of Providence. This doesn't have appropriate road arteries to handle protected growth under single family bills, much less higher density developments, uh, like the one being considered. Um, I have similar concerns about access to and response times by the emergency medical services in this area. To be upfront, honest, it is response times are might, might not area of expertise. Uh, in some, I urge the city council to reject this rezone request. All sorts developer consider applying for a rezone application along the lines of the zoning, the surrounding area, single family residential to single family large designation. Such a strategy would, would still earn the developer a sizable profits, uh, but it would help to raise the values of surrounding properties instead of damaging them. Uh, isn't a win-win outcome preferable, preferable to a win-lose outcome sincerely, Scott Finley, Providence. Uh, end of Scott's, uh, letter that he asked to be read into the record. Um, we have the petitioner here, the developer. Oh, you moved, okay. Uh, Andy Bentley here. Andy, any comments you'd like to make or add or, uh, he's also here to answer any questions from the council members. Thank you for being here. Give us your name for the record.
Uh, this, my name is Andy Bentley. Um, and I'm here to discuss the, uh, this property. So is that official? I don't know. Ultimately, uh, just a couple of comments. Um, you know, it is, I was talking to Mr. Singleton. It's like, isn't it nice to stay next to a wealthy land developer? But ultimately, uh, uh, you know, I, I do this for fun, right? This is, I do it for projects. I always have a project going on, just me, myself and I, right? So, um, so I'm not a, a big developer or anything like that. So I did develop Providence Estates, um, that turned out nicely and I actually have a lot up there. So, uh, that being said, if I felt that it was going to damage the area or my values, then I definitely wouldn't put it there because I'm actually building a home up there. So anyway, just throwing it out there. Um, but that being said, uh, we did have a, we had a packed room last time. Um, and the reason we went with multifamily medium is that's the zone that fits in. Um, as we know, there's no 55 and older zone. Um, but it also allows for open space that way, which is why we, it was put in that, in that designation, I guess. That being said, and also let's get it right down to the point, the property owner would like, property owner would like, um, a, an exorbitant amount of money for the property. So we're trying to see if that will fit, just, just being straight up. That being said, um, a lot of people are very against the multifamily medium. I can see the, the, the concern based on it's just so broad. You can build a three-story condominium, right? If you'd like. If, if I was to go back in my word, which is why I suggested a development contract, right? Which it sounds like they're not, the city's not too interested in. Um, you can speak. And I will say, you know, actually I lived in Providence for about 15 years. We had, we moved, our development wasn't done yet. So we moved over to River Heights and there, we're right by the big multifamily development there. I think it looks great. I don't think it's affected my values at all, like zero. So just throwing it out there, I don't know when the study was done, but maybe 30 years ago, maybe not here, I don't know. Who knows, right? Um, but anyway, so, uh, but people, there is concern. There's no development contract option, it sounds like the city's willing to do. So I, I get where everyone's coming from and my neighbors, they're my future neighbors as well. So I don't want to, you know, take too many people off. But ultimately I came up with another option of just a single family high, um, which puts it in about 18, about 18 lots. Um, what we do is we for, we, we forego the open space. It just becomes more like a, a regular circle, right? We're, we're not, you don't have to do, you know, that type of thing. Um, but there is less density. Um, so that is something that I'm willing to propose as well. I might, I could show you guys and pass it to you guys. We've got a mic. So, so this would fit in the single family high. So I believe there's 18 lots there. So that's, that's the other option. Like I said, you forego the open space, but it's more of like a normal, traditional, just a smaller lots. Um, the mention of, you know, the emergency vehicles, that type of thing, you know? Um, and a lot of cities that are built on in hills and snows, they seem to be doing okay with the emergency vehicles, that type of thing. They get along. Um, and then also I didn't think would be a problem putting this here just because Providence assisted living is very similar. It was dropped right in the middle, I think, right next to it was a horse pasture, right? And the single family homes. So I really didn't think it would be a problem at all. I didn't think it would be a whole lot of backlash, but I was wrong. So, uh, but I still, I still feel it's appropriate, um, for that development. I've always just wanted to do, you can ask the mayor. I've, I've wanted to do one of these for years. Um, just, you know, that's just something I've always wanted to do as my bucket list, right? So do a 55 and older. So, um, that's, that's, that's an option that I'm looking at as well. Um, I understand the multifamily is too broad, so, you know, I'm, I'm assuming you're probably gonna shoot that down and that's, and that's fine. Um, but this will be the next step and I would like some comments on that if you guys have any regarding my potential change there, so.
By email. Do you have that one?
Are you talking to put it up?
I was just offering if, if I, if I could.
Actually, so yes.
If you send it to me, I could throw it up. I think they might be interested. So at, at that point, just.
Yeah. Any other questions for me? Oh, yeah. It was a, it was an option for a single family high.
If you were coming with the single family high, would you need to go back to planning and zoning?
Not, not necessarily. If, if you wanted to get more input on single family high specifically, um, it would be fine to do that, but single family high was talked about a little bit. Um, you, you could consider it, um, or you could, you could have a go back for a public hearing.
I would definitely want to go back.
So, so the petitioner, the developer would have to start over. Petition for a different zone because this is different than what he's asking for right now. So this would have to go back to planning, commission, public hearing again, um, because this is different than what you're asking for.
He could amend his petition.
Right.
And it would go back. If, if you can, if you denied this, then he would start over. If you continued it, um, with the idea that he would take, since he's offered single family high, if you continued your action on this petition until he went back and held a, a public hearing in planning commission, uh, and received their recommendation on single family high, you could do it that way. You could do it either way. You could deny and he could reapply. You could continue and he'd go back through the, the public hearing with planning commission. So could amend his petition.
Yeah.
So I, I really value what planning and zoning does and I thought Kathleen was going to read a letter and maybe that.
We're gonna have to, I thought the mayor was gonna read it.
Okay. Okay.
I'm happy to read it.
Well, I just, that probably should have happened before the public comments of this so that, because, because we, there's continuation, you like, they make the recommendations to us and we really value the work that they do and the time that they put into it and the time that you take to go to planning and zoning meetings. So that should have been read before the public comments so that you can know that your voices from the, the planning and zoning meeting were heard. Um, but then without planning and zoning's recommendation for higher density, I personally would, um, not do more than single family residential. I feel like that's what it butts up against. That's what neighbors would be comfortable with. I feel like, um, that's where I would stand unless the planning and zoning made a different recommendation. But, but just to be totally frank, that's where I'm at.
The single family traditional.
Traditional. Yeah.
What's the acreage on those lots? Traditional.
Well, Nelson's gonna be in Martin.
No. Oh, traditional?
Traditional, she said here.
Well, I, for some reason, I thought you said residential.
Well, I did.
Is there two different? Is it residential? Will you explain the difference then?
Yeah.
Residential is a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. Then remember that's minimum. They can do, certainly go larger if they want. We don't have a maximum lot size. And traditional is a minimum lot size of, um, 12,000 square feet. One of the, a couple of the other differences between those have to do with frontage requirements. Traditional's 95, residential's 80. So sometimes even though a developer is going to have a majority of, of lots, maybe all of them, over 12,000 square feet, sometimes depending on the property, they'll ask for the residential just so they can have narrower frontages in order to make their development plan work. Um, you can see a mix of traditional and residential zoning. If you go drive down Country Garden, that road, um, on the south side of 300 South, that development is a mix of residential and traditional. We had a, um, an ordinance at the place at the time that allowed them to do that type of a mix and, uh, and so you can see what that looks like.
Do we still have that ordinance that you could mix?
No, we don't.
See, and part of my thinking is I, if I felt like this would transfer into more affordable housing, then I would maybe think differently, but, but the landlord is asking for a ton of money in order for it to work and maybe, you know, it, maybe it's just not realistic with the amount of money that he's asking, but, but I think it, it needs to be congruent with, with what exists.
Can Kathleen read her letter?
Yep.
I mean, yeah.
The letter was to the, the council, but.
Okay. I just want people to know that they're, that they're heard from planning and zoning and that, that information is passed forward.
If you'd like me to read it, I can go ahead and read it.
I think I've got a good sense of where people are sitting on this issue too. We can draw this out all evening or.
And I can read it. We spent two minutes reading it.
Sorry, I don't read it. You guys ready for second dinner yet?
Yeah.
I mean, if, if the council wants to go ahead and make a motion.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
I, I can do that and, and move on, so.
I move that we reject, um, res, sorry, I closed it. Give me a number, please. I don't remember.
007, 2021.
I move that we reject ordinance 007, 2021.
Don't need to read it.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, rezone a parcel, uh, 021150027, uh, petition for rezone from agricultural to multifamily medium.
Yes, I moved that we reject that one.
We moved that we reject it. Okay, I have a motion on the table from council member Paulson.
I'll second it.
I have a second from council member. Okay. So motion on the table and a second. So I'll call for a vote if you're ready for that. All right. Vote on the motion, all in favor of the motion to reject the petition, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. Petition's denied. Thank you. All right. Andy may or may not be back.
Come, come back.
All right. Thank you, council. We'll go ahead and move on. Uh, this is another rezone. Uh, we heard this at the last, uh, we had a public hearing at the last planning commission meeting. We also have a letter from the planning commission chair describing the, uh, meeting and the comments that were made. So I'll go ahead and read this. Ordinance 0102021. Rezone a parcel 020920020. Providence City Council will consider and may take action on an ordinance authorizing the rezoning of property in the general area 100 East, 300 North. Uh, Providence City, Utah, parcel 020920020 currently is zoned as agricultural zone with the application and proposal requesting it be single family high. Uh, that zone is, uh, an development adjacent to this parcel. Uh, we, city staff, it's known as Brookside. So if someone wants to know what that zoning looks like, that is the Brookside development. It's been there for 18, 20 years, uh, just to the north and east. Okay. Charlie, you want to give us your info on this and we'll dig into it. Council members, did you watch this one?
Yes.
Yes? We did our own one.
Apologize, Andy, the same thing that Scott Finley is only, at least I'm not sneezing, but my allergies, my throat is itching and so are my eyes, so I can't see and I'm breathing. And I'm ODing on cough drops. So, um, this is a little bit different. This is exactly what you were talking about with Andy. This is single family high. Um, these are 6,000 minimum lot size, 6,000 square foot lots. The frontage can go as narrow as 60 feet. Again, um, it's 5.5. it's 5.5 units per net acre. If the developer chooses to follow our PUD ordinance, he does get a bump in density like, excuse me, like we did with the Ballard Springs. However, he's also required, or she is also required to set aside 35, at least 35% open space for the development. There are a few other things that the PUD ordinance requires of the developer in order to make that happen and and one of the biggest things is that if it's a PUD, everything within it is private. So the service, we get the mains to them, but then the service, the interior mains are private for water sewer, stormwater treatment, all of that type of thing. This applicant, the purpose of this rezon is to request changing the zoning from ag. And again, this agricultural piece, excuse me, it's my understanding that it is less than five acres as well. So at some point, in order to continue to develop this, it will need a rezon. The zones surrounding the property are multifamily residential, single family high, and single family traditional. The retirement community is actually zoned multifamily residential, which allowed 7.25 units per acre. That was in order to accommodate the assisted living center in there. The the homes themselves could have been done under single family high probably, but in order to accommodate the assisted living center, we went to multifamily residential. So that's what, that's where that is. The developer says, I feel strongly, or I feel that single family high density fits best into this area. It is the same density as much of the surrounding area and less dense than the area immediately south and east of the property. Single family detached and single family attached homes are permitted in the single family high district. I already explained the minimum lot size and and the width and the maximum number of units. Aaron Walker, the Urban Fire Department Deputy Marshal and Fire Inspector, reviewed the application for fire and life state safety, and his review was attached in the planning commission packet. One of the things with his review is really at this point in time, without being able to look at a formal development plan, he can't really review, make a lot of comment on it. However, when it, when we do get the the zone that you choose and the developer can make a formal commitment to that plan, then we will have Aaron review and he'll come back and and make sure that the way it's built is safe. One of the things that people talked about in the previous planning commission public hearing, they talked about wetlands. Providence City does not have the authority over the wetlands. That's up to the Utah, or excuse me, the US Army Corps of Engineers. We follow what they, what they say. So the developer will have to work with the with the Corps for wetlands. The developer is is looking at a delineation study to actually determine where the wetlands are. Wetlands have a tendency to change. They can grow, they can shrink, just depends. There's more to it than just looking at it in a, in a dry year. I I, they look at the type of plant life that's existed there. There's other things that they can look at to determine, not just based on whether it's wet or dry. The, one of the other things that was discussed quite a bit in the planning commission meeting was the potential of groundwater, high groundwater. If the develop, if, once the zone has changed to whatever it is and someone starts to develop, they will be required to do some studies. And they will have to, our ordinance considers it high groundwater. If it's, if you go down 12 feet and anywhere from 12 feet or up, you run into evidence of water, then we consider that a hazard water table area. More than 12 feet, it doesn't meet our hazard water table in our ordinance. So the developer will, can't just do shallow test holes. They have to go down at least the 12 feet to make sure that what they're dealing with there. Did hold their public hearing. They did make a recommendation and their recommendation at this time was to deny the rezon request. So, and Jody Robbins, the applicant, is here in the audience tonight if you have questions. So. Thank you.
Questions at Scarlett? Discussion, let's ourselves. Scarlett mentioned Julie Robbins. Petitioner is here. He was at the planning commission meeting. He answered questions for the residents. Del Rey, you wanted to speak?
I think it's appropriate for Kathleen to share what the planning and zoning.
Yeah. I know, Russell, and I am really new to all this. Thank you, or you have a lot going on. I did attend the planning and zoning meeting last week, just mostly out of curiosity when I saw the sign on the street corner. I I wanted to see how many people come and what their comments were. I'm not in the neighborhood, but I do live in Providence. Anyway, Scarlett gave a very good recap of what went on and I guess my question was regarding all the water issue comments that I heard. If you chose to go ahead, because you you get the final vote. You chose to go ahead to allow the rezon. Do you have, do you have to tell us? I don't know. So that's my, that's my question. And I do understand that the planning and zoning advised against it. So that's my question, is if you choose to go for it, do you?
So let me, let me address that. Councilmembers don't have to say why they're voting. We encourage dialogue and discussion and deliberation on the issue. Tonight, we're not voting on anything other than the rezon. I know a lot of questions and comments came up about water table.
Yeah.
I mean, residents in the area, it's a known high water table area. The other development is built on and we've got another development or at the east of there that's also higher water. And there was another gentleman that spoke. He's not here tonight, very vocal. This goes through a long process. He kind of implied that we're giving the developer carte blanche and once we vote tonight, he's off and running. And that's not the case. There's much more, and Scarlett can go through all the steps that's involved. I mean, we've got all the city staff that have to weigh in on this, including our city engineer. And if the developer doesn't come up with a plan that mitigates the groundwater issue, then we send it back, say we can't prove it. If if the developer comes back with something acceptable to our city engineer and he makes that choice, we're not, the council isn't second guessing the city engineer. Then he signs off on that. It has to, we have to dot the i's, cross the t's. Our city staff make sure we do that, so. Not just groundwater, but all the other co issues that have to be addressed. So developer's gonna have to jump through a lot of hoops before there's any issue ground that's started dug up and pushed around for foundations. The other thing that the Army Corps of Engineers issue came up, part of this is wetlands. And at the public hearing, there was, up on the screen, they showed where the wetlands area was. The developer said he'd had this recently surveyed for wetlands. And it's not buildable. So there'd be some green space, open space here, so it limits what actually, what is it, Scarlett, four acres?
I think it's 4.68 or something like that.
So it limits what can be built. So I think he said 20 units on this property. So he mentioned senior living, and there are senior living just to the south and to the west of here. But in that zone, you can also replicate what is to the east and to the north, because it's called Brookside. It's an identical zone as well.
Right.
So. Did that answer your
Yeah.
question?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. But individual council members are always open to talking to people when they have questions. So we want dialogue. We care about citizens despite what they might think. They, we're here because we care.
Well, like I said, I was just sort of curious to see how many people come to a planning and zoning meeting and what that particular comment comments in general were about. I wondered if they were against developing, but overall, it was water issues, ground groundwater, stormwater, rainwater, wetlands. So I was just curious.
A lot of people come to the rezoning. I was on planning commission. A lot of people come to the rezonings and not so many to the other agenda.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Oh, boy. It sounds like there's a lot going on.
Thank you.
And Del Rey? Did you say you did live in this area?
I do live in Providence, but I don't live right here.
So did you say you watched the planning commission?
No, I was here last week for the meeting. Yeah, just.
I don't know if our planning commission chair mentioned we have an opening on our issue. If, just if you're. Kathleen's right here.
All right, thank you.
All right. Again, I just want to emphasize, this is, this is about rezon. This is not about groundwater. We're not experts. I'm not experts. We don't have any engineers here who can speak to this. The developer will be obligated to do the geo study. And until that's done, we have no idea whether it's a buildable or not. That's the risk he takes. And we have Jody up here who will have the answer to the question. Jody, you did another development also, and it's.
Yes, I'm Jody Robbins. I developed Providence Shire around 400 East and Spring Creek Parkway about two years ago. At least from our perspective, we felt like that the process of working with the city and going through that process was very smooth and we worked really well together with the city. So we're hoping that this goes the same way. The planning meeting was actually my first opportunity to hear from the public as well. So taking in into account their input, we've, we've changed our plan completely to, originally, we were debating between the single family or 55 and older. We've since, just from the input of of the planning commission and and the residents changed to where we're planning on doing a 55 and older development in that area. The, we feel like the 55 and older kind of merges those two separate developments perfectly in that it's the same use as a higher density to the to the southeast or southwest, but it's the density of the neighborhood to the northeast, Brookside Village. So we're, we're trying to match what's going on in in that area already. That's why we requested the less dense of the two major zones that are surrounding the parcel. We do plan on doing a find unit development for the 55 and older so that we can have it age well. Have, there's just a lot of benefits to doing that find unit development. It's, as you guys know, the, there's a lot of benefits to the 55 and older. They, it doesn't affect traffic as much because they don't travel at the peak times nearly as much. They, it doesn't affect the schools as much. Specifically in that area, we don't plan on doing any basements. These will all be slab on grade. We already anticipate that there's high water table throughout the property and don't want to add to the issue of the high water table and people's with flooding basements and such. So that's why the 55 and older, why we're leaning that way so heavily. I have done a wetlands delineation on it, and there are wetlands on those property, on the property. We're planning to avoid the wetlands as much as, well, we're planning to avoid the wetlands entirely. We don't want to mitigate them. We'll just leave them as open space. The like I said, to start with, our plan kind of transitions perfectly between the two zones. And not only is it compatible with the surrounding development, it's compatible with the physical features of the site. And we can't do that without the single family high zoning that we're requesting. We looked at the single family medium zone and it allows for the same density per acre, but has a lot size requirement of of almost 33% more per lot, which most 55 and older communities, they're not looking for a big lot that they need to take care of. They're looking for something that they, that they have low maintenance and will have the HOA and everything to take care of of those lots. And that's why we requested the single family high. Any questions for me?
Hey, yeah, I make a quick comment. I apologize. I got my properties mixed up. This legal description talks about an area on this property that's 3.95 acres, but in all, this area contains 8.63 acres. So I have to take back my statement. If it stayed ag, it could have one, one house put on it. Also, I forgot to mention, the general plan showed this as hopefully one day Providence City could work with landlord for park property. I don't know that 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 will ever happen, but that's what the the general plan was, and I apologize if I forgot to mention that.
I asked the same question as before. How many people are here for this agenda item?
Councilman.
Well, but there are a number of people on the I don't know.
On YouTube? I don't think so, Ken. There's four. I can tell you, there's four watching on on.
Watching, you don't know that they're watching necessarily on this issue. They're watching. And and some people watch council and planning commission meetings. In their, in their off hours, I mean, because it's recorded.
Come to the mic.
Want to make some comments so we can get on the record.
I'm Diane Siegfried. I live at 61 East 200 North. In fact, 40 years ago, when I did buy my half acre, I was naive and thought, in fact, this community would remain more agricultural. But then I had moved from Dallas, so I know what the megaplex can look like. So with that, I have endured and survived a assisted living and the home's back behind. So I have some urban buffer now between me and this proposed area, which has been a horse pasture for 40 years. So one gets kind of used to certain things, and most of the comments that I heard relative to what was the other zoning issue, I would say could be equally applied to the residents that live in our area, which I'm still in the historic part of Providence, but having to endure an awful lot of change. It's not that I'm anti-development. I just know that sometimes developments don't actually result in quite the way that nearby residents assumed would be their neighbors. So that's just a concern. But right now, it's, we're talking zoning, and I would just want to make sure that if we change the zone, that doesn't, that we can I guess I'm skeptical about what developers promise. No offense, Jody. You've been very good about it, but we saw some changes when we were dealing with the people who did the assisted living and the condos. We were promised certain things that never happened. And so a little skepticism. If we change the zoning, what I'm not certain is then. what I'm not certain is then have, then we've lost the potential for just open space for a while, rather than something that is high, single family, multifamily, PUD, whatever else. So I guess my concern is just changing the zone, what do we potentially lose in case things don't go quite the way we also figured with. And I would like to hear from uh, the planning and zoning because they did endure quite a bit that evening and had to think through and then make their recommendation. And I appreciate what you all are doing as well. But I'm a resident of 40 years and I'm seeing my neighborhood impacted pretty significantly.
I have a question for Jody, I guess. Sorry, Jody, you're gonna have to come back over the mic. I'll just, um, you're just the developer, you're not the landowner. Correct?
I currently have the land under contract.
Pending, pending rezone.
The rezone, so um, we have put substantial capital towards the due diligence of it, but yeah, I'm, I'm the prospective landowner.
And how many units are there to do with the 55 and older? And you probably said, and I just?
Our current plan has between uh, 31 and 34. I'm, I can't nail it down more than that because uh, inevitably engineering is going to get in the way and we're going to need some kind of water retention where I have a house sitting. So uh, somewhere in that, that low 30s number is, is where we're at. Any other questions?
I'm also just curious, will it be an HOA where that it will be cared for by the HOA that?
That's correct. Uh, we're planning on having all of the grass cared for by the HOA. Um, and uh, each unit will have a planter area that they take care of and, and kind of similar to other 55 and older communities. Um, but it will be an HOA that takes care of snow removal um, on the road because we're planning on doing it as a fine unit development. So snow removal on the road and, and driveways as well as um, yard care during the summer.
The developments in the south and west, Mountview.
Correct.
And as the crow flies, we're a block away from this personal mainstream community. Um, there are 48 units here. There are duplexes and triplexes. There are some four boxes here. Is this how you, they'd be built out?
We're, we're planning on doing detached. Um, the, I've, I've actually worked with the um, Mountain View HOA heavily to try and, we had an, an original plan that had 10 units connecting into their HOA, but uh, they didn't want, want the additional traffic. So we've kind of rearranged after getting that input to change it to uh, 55 and older single family houses um, that are all uh, within the HOA as opposed to, we used to have a both 55 and older and then a, a separate cul-de-sac of um, of single family high, but we've scrapped the single family high based on the comments from the planning commission and gone to only 55 and older.
Just something I wanted to mention. A fellow I play racquetball with said that uh, there's one gentleman there that the bishop has asked, look out for the. I'm sorry. I thought I was speaking loud. Yeah, you heard me. Um, one of the fellows I play racquetball with, he said the, the bishop has asked that one of the men that live in this development here, 55 and older, look out for the widowed ladies here. And I, last time I saw him, I said, Rocky, you know, how many men are there that live in this development of, of 48 uh, units? And then he said 10. So the other 38 residents of this development here are widows. Uh, so it's really quite, quite quiet neighborhood. And, and that's the assisted living uh, just south of it there. So we're two doors down from my, my wife and I, Joe.
So the comments from the planning and zoning that we got, um, what I didn't agree with um, was that, you know, I, I raised my family in Brookside subdivision. I lived there for over 10 years and I still know people that live there. Um, so it's not a transient neighborhood. It's a wonderful place to raise a family and I miss it. I miss the neighbors and I miss a lot of, a lot of things about it. So um, I just wanted to, to say that, that I think that this is, fits well for 55 and older. I've got a, a client right now, my associate who just moved from our ward. He's on a waiting list for 55 and older. Um, every waiting list we get on, they tell us there's at least 70 to 120 people on the waiting list. But there's a huge um, mark, there's, it's important also, I think, to keep 55 and older, and I'm almost 55, okay? Don't tell me I can't drive up, Tim South. Anyway, um, I think it's important to keep our elderly people in our community.
I hear some truth to that, you know? I live right next door to my mother-in-law for that reason.
Okay, counsel, any other comments or just discussion? All right. Uh, can I call for a motion on this? We don't have a motion on the table.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from council member.
That we approve ordinance 010-2021, the rezone of parcel 020920020.
Motion from council member. I have a second. Hal, come on up.
Can we get the second though?
Can I have a second?
Yeah, she was gonna read the.
She can.
So I might understand that you're gonna disregard the recommendation of planning zoning commission and go ahead with this, is that, that what you said?
Prerogative, yes. It's a recommendation only. So all of the issues that we brought
We have to vote either way. We have to vote gay or male. Either way, we have to vote.
Yeah, I, I, I know. So all of the issues that were brought up at the planning and zoning commission, they don't mean anything then, do they?
No, they do. You have to understand though, I mean, that, I mean, we have them as a recommending body, but if, but if they were the ones making the final decision, then, then we wouldn't, then it wouldn't even come to us. You know what I'm saying?
I understand.
And for the most part, I believe, and ju- just speaking for myself, I always, I used to be on the planning and zoning also. So I, I absolutely appreciate them and what they do, but there's been times that I have not gone with the recommendation. You look at my record, I would say for the most part I have, but there's times when I feel strongly that my job as a city councilman, and I feel like I have a little bit of a bigger picture when it comes to zoning, but that's just.
Hal, I don't, I don't know if you know, I, you've heard our comments, but I don't know if you know how we're gonna vote yet, but maybe it would be helpful when we get to the discussion because I haven't shared exactly all the ways that I feel, but I think it's far from being decided right now. I think we're just trying to move it along. Yes, wonderful.
I have a motion on the table, so I have to ask for a second. We can still discuss it. Can we talk about it?
I'll second it, but I don't know how I'm voting yet, by the way.
Second from council member. All right.
Kathleen needs to share.
Kathleen, come on up. Kathleen attended a summit on housing yesterday.
I also think if we don't know how we're voting, we can always continue it.
Sure, we certainly can. That's the council's prerogative. We have a motion on the table. We'll have to vote. Um, and that's good, I guess. Go ahead.
Well, the other, the other thing to consider is that you also have received different information than we did. That's why I make, because I would go with your recommendation, but it's split. Your recommendation wasn't a clear, they're unanimous, it wasn't unanimous.
There was dissent.
Yeah, and the plan has changed.
Right.
And the water concerns have been addressed.
No, they haven't.
Well, that they, that they will, he can't develop unless they're addressed. So in that way, it's been.
Yeah, we knew that.
You know, so it's, it's not so clear.
Still up in the air. Okay, let me just read that, what we came up with, based on what we heard. Um, dear uh, Providence City Council members, uh, the Providence City Planning Commission met on June 9th, 2021. One of the agenda items was a public hearing on the subject of a rezone for a four acre parcel. Oh, this is the wrong one. Is it four acres?
No, it's eight acres.
That's what you get when you cut and paste. My other letter was similar to this. Okay, so it's an eight acre parcel of the area of 300 North and 100 East Providence. The parcel is currently zoned agricultural with the applicant requesting a rezon for single family high or 6,000 square foot lots. There were approximately 20 people in attendance. The commission heard from about six um, people who expressed some concerns about high density, but the ma- majority of the concerns were centered around high water table in the area and worry about the displacing of water on the property where it will flow if it cannot flow to that property. In fact, uh, the fact that Blacksmith Fork tailwater from a lateral drains directly into the property, it has always been a swampy piece of ground. Much of the lot may be designated as wetlands. One other concern of the property owners in the area was that there is already a big area that's zoned, single family high, which tends to attract first home buyers who don't stay in neighborhoods for long term. Now, these are comments that we got. They were concerned about adding additional similar houses to that area. Residents did not stipulate what kind of zone they would accept in that area if single family high were turned down. The current owner of the parcel is Ashley Ann Nielsen and the developer is Jody Rivas. It's Rob- Robbins. Okay, I'm mistaken, sorry. In reviewing the Providence general plan, the parcel, that particular parcel has for years been identified and planned as a PUB, which is public space and was meant to stay as green slash park space. However, it is not currently owned by the city. And I just pasted in here, the purpose and objective of the PUB zone is to allow for public buildings and associated uses, to enable land to be used for public open space or recreational purposes, allowing a range of recreational settings and activities and compatible land uses, and to protect and enhance the natural environment or recreational purposes or recreation purposes.
Ryan, please scroll on the letter.
After careful consideration of citizen feedback, the findings, the fact, conclusion and conditions, the planning commission voted three to one to reject the request for rezone from agricultural to single family high.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Kathleen, do you vote as a member of the planning?
I do.
By the way, it's a planning commission, it's not planning and zoning.
Oh.
So.
We started calling P and Z.
I know.
It used to be called that way.
It, at some point in time, it was changed, was planning and zoning. Planning used to make the zoning decisions. Now the decisions of zoning are council. Oh, we're the council and zoning. Council. Come on up.
This is for the developer. Jody, so, um, on the parcel that's uh, delineated jurisdictional wetland, um, if the city doesn't buy that property, who owns that property and who maintains it?
Ashley Nielsen.
I, I think what you're asking, it's not a parcel that's uh, zoned wetlands. It's a delineate, it's a overlay, so it's an area of the existing zone that is, or of the existing parcel that is considered wetlands. And the HOA would actually own that land and it would be held as open space. So the HOA would, would maintain that and it would be in the bylaws of the HOA. Um, we can't count that towards our open space uh, calculations for the PUD because our open space calculations have to be um, based on usable land and that land is not considered usable because it is wetlands. So um, all our calculations are based on uh, basically eliminating that land from uh, our calculations. And then uh, when all said and done, it will, will, will improve where we can, but a lot of it we won't be able to touch because it is wetland.
What, what, what's the acreage of wetland on it? And then what's the acreage of?
You gotta go to the mic.
So on your eight acre parcel, what is the acreage that's going to be jurisdictional wetlands? And what's the acreage of then the additional, since you say you can't use that as open space, then what's the additional acreage that's gonna be open space?
Jody, the developer, again. Um, the, so we've had the wetlands delineation uh, done and the area, uh, this is rough right now. They're, they're in the process of, of um, finishing up that report, but the area that is considered um, wetlands is about just shy of one acre. So it, that's less than what the overlay um, from the original survey in the 80s was, but when they actually tested the land and did everything, slightly under an acre, were required with the PUD ordinance to have 35% of the remaining um, roughly 7.6 acres as open space. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel. We good or what?
Well, good discussion. I just, yeah, my comments is, I haven't said much on this particular one. Um, and Hal, this is mainly for you too. Just, just so you know how I approach these things, when, when I have a vote on something like this, um, I tend to try to move in alignment with the general plan. There needs to be compelling evidence, otherwise to deviate from the general plan. I'm not saying that that can't happen. There's a reason that that plan exists and I really try to honor that. Um, the second thing that I do is I seriously consider the, the vote and the position of the planning and zoning commission because I believe that they have continuity in their decisions and they're trying to work with the general plan. So I kind of do it in that hierarchy. Um, and the third one, then I try to, I try to get a pulse from the Providence citizens as to, as to how they feel about it because I feel like I'm a surrogate here. Like I'm, I'm here to kind of, you know, vote for all of Providence residents. So that makes the job somewhat easier if I hear from people. Um, so my personal position on this is I, based upon those three things, I think you'll see that I vote that I, that I'm not in favor of this proposal. Um, but I, but I will add this because Christine, I think, brings up a good point. And um, I, I think we do need to start having a serious conversation about multi-generational integration in our communities that we're not having now as people age. And I say this as being the youngest person within three or four houses of me where my children go over and care for our 80-year-old neighbors and my mother-in-law and my son does the garbage for the gentleman across the street and I prune the fruit trees for my neighbor next door. And I've got to tell you, there's a lot of benefit and value in that, both for them and for me. And it's really, really wonderful to see. It benefits our family and I know it benefits them. And I do see if we don't address this issue of integrating 55 older or different family types, that we're gonna lose a real, a real sincere community engagement that we have in our communities. Um, I'm grateful it exists in mine today and I hope it'll exist in my kids going forward. But based upon the facts that I've had here, I really try to honor the general plan. Um, so, so I think you'll see that that's how I vote today. Um, I try to consider those things carefully and I believe, I believe my fellow council members, even if they vote differently than me, I know that they go through that same process and they really try to get it right. So that's kind of where I'm sitting. So that's kind of where I'm sitting and, and I, and I certainly respect any council member who feels differently about it as well because they've just, they have a different life experience and they've arrived somewhere else, so.
Council, any further comments, questions? Yes, sir.
I'm Neil Barber. I live just two houses down on the south of the property. Question for Jody, how far down do you say that they are down?
I don't have any idea. I, I trust the professionals that know what they do.
Well, what I know, and Scarlett say that they would have to dig down.
We're voting on a rezon for mine. That's all this is.
I just have a question on that.
As I mentioned earlier, and Scarlett got more specific, is there has to be a geo study done. And Scarlett said that there's any groundwater that's above 12 feet, then there has to be additional engineering done to mitigate it. And it's a, it's a, what do you call it? It's a sensitive area, but it's, so.
Does that mean dig down 12 feet by no water?
The study that Jody just recently has them working on is a wetland delineation. That is different than a groundwater study. So they're determining plant life and they do look at water because that's what makes wetlands, but they don't really consider the depth of the water. What, well, I'm, they don't consider the underground water table like we will have a geotech study to look at, or the developer will have a geotech study look at for the underground water table. So they're two different studies and the geotech study isn't required at this point in time.
I just know that you dig down a couple of feet, just about any place at all in that property, that you'll find water. And if you look around, walk out there and see the, the growth that comes from water. I mean, they've never had to water that when they were taking hay off of it all the years of.
So one of the gentlemen that was here, I think it was Todd Hammond, mentioned that there's discharge on one of the laterals, Blacksmith Fork. And so that will have to be relocated somewhere so that it.
There's just springs all over in that property.
Well, if it's not buildable and our, our city engineer says it's, it's not going to fly, then it's not going to get to that. Okay, anything else? We have a motion on the table in favor. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Move anyone else? Any other ayes? Nay?
You have stated?
I don't know because I see this as being a good place for higher density. But I, because I'm so much on the fence, the only thing I can do is go with the planning and zoning recommendation because I am just torn. Janelle, this is your job to be on the fence. It's not a fun place to be because. And if I vote yes, I know which way the mayor will go. Yes.
It's in my backyard.
I'm May.
I, I certainly want, wouldn't want any more seniors my age living walk away from me. Heavens, imagine that.
Oh, my gosh, I, I'm going to lose sleep. I would say. Well, then that means nay.
Can she abstain? And we could also continue if you want to sleep on it.
Not sleep on it?
But if, if it fails, you could follow up if I'm saying this right. A motion to continue, continue this or once we voted, it's done or?
I just, one, one thing I have a question about. And my vote stays the same either way, but did the planning and zoning think that it was 55 and older in there or did it just need to go single family homes? So that was my question. And that's what, I'm wondering if you got different information than we got at the planning meeting.
I understood we can't guarantee 55 and older under S F H or F M.
The one that did vote in favor was Rowan Cecil. And I do believe that 55 and older may have been talked about, at least a portion of it was talked about. A portion of it was, a portion has been discussed as 55 and older and it was Rowan and he, he did mention that he favored that for 55 and older. He, he's looking for a 55 and older place.
So it was, Kathleen, it was freedom one, right?
Yes, it was.
Joe abstained.
Joe was not voting.
Well, no, he does vote when we are short somebody, if he's the next alternate. So we do call for his vote. If, if one voting member is absent, he's not there just to observe, he's there to vote.
He didn't vote though.
Okay, well, he should have voted. That's why, that's why we have alternate. So I don't know how he would have voted. But I thought, Kathleen, I thought he said that he had a conflict of interest or something on. I don't know, he may have something to do with the, the family, the bear family. Jody? So I, I thought he made that comment that he was, that he couldn't vote anyway.
As a developer and during the discussion, if you guys go back and look at the recordings, one of the, one of the planning commission did say if they could be guaranteed it was going to be 55 and older, they would be more for it. But as a developer, there's, and as the process that Providence City has laid out, there's no way for me to be able to offer that assurance other than I, this is the zone that 55 and older works the best in. This is the zone that the 55 and older that is going in on the southwest corner of Providence is zoned this, we went with the single family high, not because it gives us the highest density. It's because that's what.
It's the same density.
It, it's the same density as that one out there. It's lower density than the zone that's immediately adjacent to it. But there's no way for us to administratively have a plan at the rezon application phase, have a, a step plan. All we can say is, is that this land with, with the water table and what's surrounding it, the 55 and older is what works best in that area.
It works best because of the lab on grade, no basements.
Lack of basements where adjacent to other 55 and older, that's higher density and where, where the same density as the other existing community, Brookside Village, that's been there for 20 years, so.
Kathleen, can you remind me what information tonight is different from the information that you received? The 55 and older.
We received information that it could be 55 or older or the other or.
Is that the only thing that was, that was, that's different than the information you received?
Yes.
Or high density.
Single family high. Right.
I have a question for the residents. Who? Residents who came on this issue.
Oh, sure. Can you pick one? Invite him up.
Sure, Hal, why don't you come up here? And if anybody else thinks differently or has different feelings, I might have to confront them also. Does hearing the feedback from the developer change how you feel about the issues of the property?
No.
Is your main issue water?
Yes. The water table, the drainage, how they're going to work with the canal company as far as the irrigation water. I've got an irrigation on both sides to my house. I sit right on a corner. So I've got it on, on the front and on the side. It goes down the street towards where that development's planning or trying to plan to be. And I'm concerned about that because I've got a huge side yard that I need that irrigation water and.
So how will you help me understand? And obviously we're not, this hasn't closed because I'm struggling at this moment and Josh is going to kick me because he really likes to.
No, I, I, these, these decisions impact people wise. I think you should take what you feel good about.
Yeah, and I'm not feeling great yet. So how? Is your concern that you, that the irrigation will not come to you? Or is your concern that the new houses will flood and the engineers won't get it right? Or is it something else?
I'm not so concerned about the, I'm sure the water will still come in some way, but I'm concerned about where's it going to go at the other end? Because it drains into that field now and contributes to the, the marshiness of that piece of property. And so that's. We don't have anybody who can inform us. We don't have our city engineer, so we expect that.
So what water coming near you is?
Black slash. I was going by what you said that Todd Hammond was talking about at the.
Right, you were saying the reason it's marshy there is because there's, the end of that lateral of discharge is on the property.
So you're the last, so the tailwater goes off, right?
Tailwater goes into that property.
Yeah, so I can tell you though, so I, I live on one of those houses up in Providence where, where I'm discharging tailwater and they put a development in there, but just, just for background. The developer, as part of that process, built some retaining area where they hadn't captured that tailwater and it's worked out just fine. They're like gathering up that tailwater yet. So it's, it's working where we're at and I'm kind of in a, not quite on the end, I think I'm second line. And, and so I have less water concerns. I just want to bring that up with you that I, that the developer actually utilized that for that. Do you remember that Scarlett, they built the retention area up there?
Yes. One of the things that I think it's important to remember is that the developer will have to answer all of those questions as the mayor has said, but to have him answer them now is premature.
Right, because the research is still being done and.
Well, and also the zone makes a difference on, on his stormwater retention, on everything. Because of the lot sizes and things, so.
And, and I actually, I'm sorry, Scarlett.
No, you're good. That's, that's, the zoning is the, the key to what we start with in order to have them do their geotech designs and everything is what lot sizes are they going to work for, work with? Because that starts to tell us what kind of impervious surface and you, you can make some pretty good estimates once you can determine what lot sizes you're dealing with. But until we can determine that, it's not, it's premature to do anything more than say that the developer will have to, have to make provisions for whatever those end results come out as.
I feel like this zone actually works better for the water than other zones. For example, single family medium because, because they can have more open space and have the houses a little closer together. And so this zone makes sense to me. My concern with the bench rezon was that it was budding up against much different zoning and this is budding up to very comparable zoning. But I trust that the engineers will get the water right. And that's your biggest concern is the water.
Okay. Retention ponds to catch the water, the irrigation water that drains into that field now is one of the possibilities that they would look at. If you come down to the corner where my water goes down towards that development, when the, when it's running at full speed, you'd be amazed at how much water comes down there. I mean, last, last, last water turn before this one this week, the water was so intense that it ran over my side yard down to my driveway, just running over.
And that's at the end of the lateral, so that's.
No, that's on the side of my property.
Right.
Where the, where the corner is, you go down my, my property on that side about maybe 10 yards. And there's a, there's a pipe that, that it goes through so that you could actually drive a vehicle onto that side.
And it's overflowing.
And it's overflowing over that pipe. And it was, it was running through my yard like somebody was standing over the fire hose. I mean, it was amazing. So I'm really concerned about what they're going to do with that, with that water. Right now, this year, maybe not so much because of the, the drought. But this year's different than most, so. No.
So I'm last on the lateral, just down the street from, from Hal. And it goes west, to 100 West and under, under.
Thank you. I, I would love if you have another, something that would invite me.
We have flood irrigation. I live next door west of Hal. When they put in the condos behind, and I, let me step back for a second. Please don't misunderstand that some of us who express some concerns are somehow anti any kind of development, certainly not against people who are older and may need a different kind of residential area. And I heard a little bit of that from some of the comments. So please don't misunderstand our concerns. It's our neighborhood.
Get this right.
Where we are, yeah. When they put in the homes behind for the condos that accompany the assisted living, in that instance, apparently nobody talked to the developer and let them know that all the half acres south of that property were flood irrigation and had been using flood irrigation. We had flooded basements because those did have basements built. And I understand Jody's saying no basements. But once again, it comes back to, forgive me, my skepticism about, we're asking for a zone change, but at this point, of course, no one can offer a complete final developmental plan. So it's kind of a trust issue here on if in fact a zone gets changed, the appropriate watch guards will be in place to assure that what was initially promised is in fact what actually happens and that it is done in a way that protects the people who are down from the flow of that water. Some of the people who were at the meeting last week are those who live north of this property and were very concerned about their basements that are pre-existing and what kind of flooding might, might take place if in fact nobody is assuring and monitoring the, the developer and how they handle their, what, handling of the, how they handle the handling of the water. So I, I think that was a piece that I didn't hear quite as strongly from the planning commission this time, but that was a, a major concern for many of those residents north of this development.
So what I'm understanding from the mayor and from Scarlett is that the engineers have to assure that the water has proper drainage so that, so that that doesn't have to be a concern. As far as the trust with developers, I feel like developers want to maintain trust with the city and with their residents.
One would think so. May I just point out again, I'm somebody who's been here who some things didn't quite turn out the way we had thought we were being told.
That happens.
Yes, so again, I understand. I have a bias here because I was one of those who naively thought, ah, okay, that's what they'll do. And in fact, that wasn't exactly what they came up with. So again, it's just more of the, if we're changing the zone, once that zone's changed, it's rare that it could ever go back. And I appreciated your comments. I didn't realize that that was originally thought of as a potential green space recreational. And that was another comment that many of us said is we're losing any of the open green spaces and we're a neighborhood that has had those green spaces, may I say it again, 40 years.
Well, and I'll tell you, my number one goal this year as a city council member was to acquire green space. And the, the problem is that the city can only pay market value.
I know.
And they can sell to developers for much more. And so this land owner. And so this landowner, um, we can hold her ground hostage by not allowing this, which we can do until a developer comes in at a time when a council will approve it. Or we can say this does allow green space because, because there'll be density of homes and then the rest will be left open and kept nice by an HOA. And it'll, will allow seniors who are on waiting list of a hundred people to have a place to live. And that's, that's where the internal conflict comes. Recognizing also that, that change is hard. I, I, I understand.
The main point is not letting, as that economist said, not letting some people gain a profit at a loss for others because it changes so.
And in this.
You're just not sure which way this might go.
Scott Finley is a dear friend of mine and, and I value his opinion and I know he's a great scholar. Um, but I feel like this is already up against zones that are similar or even higher density. And so, so to me, that doesn't, that doesn't have the same validity.
As long as there is some, again, the trust for some of us who have seen some things done differently than what was promised. I think that's quite frankly, the more major concern is whether or not the city makes sure that the developer follows through, it's monitored and it in fact becomes what we all are hoping for and seeing as a potential benefit. But we know that in some cases, there have been some things that have been developed that quite frankly, neighboring residents have been a little bit disappointed with what they found to be their new neighbors. So, and, and new neighbors meaning the development, not individuals. Thank you.
Scarlett, can I ask you a question then?
Oh, and look at that sunset. I've been watching. I've been thinking that everyone should stand and look.
This developer just did the Shire subdivision. How, I mean, did they do what they said they were going to do?
They did. They met the ordinances, they met the code. Um, you know, I have to say that when Mountain View Retirement went in, it was a different time. We weren't as sophisticated. Um, stormwater was not the issue that it is. I mean, the, at least not in our area. The stormwater laws and, and things like that have, uh, developed over the time. Um, we've learned, we've made some changes to the ordinances, uh, on the construction side to try and, and help so that our developments are, um, good contributors and leave us with, and, and the developers come in and, and leave us with good infrastructure. Um, we can't guarantee that everything will be perfect though.
So today, I know twenty, thirty years ago, um, things are different. And I know previous employees that said, uh, things happen with developers because the developer knew the mayor. And, um, so things got, might have gotten done different than what the city staff thought was gonna get built. But it was allowed to be built. But there's a reason I ran for city council and that is so that we do things that developers say they're gonna do, builders. And I'll use an example that Rob brought to my attention, certainly after I became mayor. The developer, a builder, putting in a sidewalk and went down the street and had a road profile. Went around the corner, had a different road profile. And they wanted to negotiate. The engine, their engineer wanted to negotiate. They wanted a meeting. Because they wanted to leave the sidewalk where it was. Well, that didn't make sense because we had utilities under concrete. And, you know, Rob came in, Scarlett's office and, you know, what are we gonna do? They want a meeting. And I said, tell them the mayor says no. So we do two things today. What they promised, they have to put on paper. We also inspect and follow up on what they've built. And that's how this city operates today. And if I hear anything different, um, people are gonna hear about it. We also have a city manager here now for, uh, going on two years. And he's got a lot of experience running a city, a lot of experience with construction through his entire family. And have they, his family's business operated for many years. It wouldn't have operated for many years if they didn't do a decent job, they didn't leave a mess behind. So that's how I see things. But there is one question that, that came up that did not get addressed. And that is park space. Uh, Ryan commented on that. Uh, early, we have a parks master plan which we have and did not have ever before.
Right.
And we have designated parts of the city as lacking park space and green space. Um, and we have a budget of so much money to spend and someone mentioned, um, developers are asking an arm and a leg for property and, um, it's not within the city's budget to afford. We even bid on property that we were a day away from closing. Uh, with a property owner, about ten acres of property in the south end of the city which has no parks. Uh, and they changed their mind because they didn't want sixty-five thousand an acre, they wanted a hundred thousand.
I don't know why they changed their mind, but they did change their mind. We, we can't force the sale. Um, we can't force the sale. And, and all I can really speak to is that we do have different ordinances in place now than we had. Um, we have different ordinances in place now than we had five years ago. I mean, we, we are continually trying to stay on top of EPA concerns, stormwater concerns, infrastructure concerns. Um, and so, so we do do things differently than we did fifteen, twenty years ago. But, but we cannot guarantee. We can do our very, very, very best. So.
Brian, you had a comment about the park space or acquiring that for parks.
Well, I would say that, that we have a park up in the area. Um, we have areas that are unrepresented, um, and it does take a willing seller in order to get park space. So if this doesn't go and you wanna sell, contact me. But, uh, at that point, we do have other areas that we are really trying to, to rectify and clear up, but, um.
There's big portions of the city that are completely lack of space. And so this would not be a high priority for purchasing land in this portion of the city. So I'm ready to vote.
Can, can I recap wherever you're at? I got a, a yay, I got a nay. I got a nay. And then we have Carrie.
Yay.
All right, the mayor votes in favor, measure passes. Thank you. And the five minute break. We can do a five minute break and we'll do our best to get a little bit.
To see if it, how it did right now and if the plan position changes.
Oh, you mean when we had, we served, we had a buffet?
But anyway, so, anyway, I didn't mean to be rude.
No, I, no, I always appreciate when somebody.
No, that's, it's not.
Correct. Because sometimes, you know.
If the groundwater is.
Why are there so much water now that's flooding?
Yes, that's good proof. That is part of what built the, the revenue. Keep in mind, we're still on record, we still have a recording, so.
Oh, I thought I wrote you back needing a second round. Um, here's, here's my opinion. I would not invite the. You know, I'm great with these great kind of fun, you know, and it's, you know, they can seem better than I can. But, yeah, I, I thought he was. Oh, that's okay, I'm sorry. But I, I had fun times. Enjoyed, enjoyed some of it. There you go, that's a public party.
Well, maybe, yeah.
Well, I was the one that told her in the first place.
Yeah. Well, they'll pay you the super, super thanks.
You know.
It was fun. I loved it. Like for me, for me, I don't come to music, I go because I wanna sit there with other people. I wanna have a party with other people, you know?
Right.
But yeah, I, I think I've heard, I think it prevents the party a little, little, little more important. But what else feel bad? I mean, I think everyone there was super excited.
We had a good time. And I felt like the crowd was there. I did feel it.
Well, I left early, so I don't know.
I think that was just.
I think we just need to be clear on what we expect as far as timeframe.
But it was a win. I mean, it was a big W, like the last concert, the Park O' Light, it was several years ago when, when Peterson's.
Yeah.
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 Oh, did Peterson, I think I was like, well, good to see you.
Good to see you too.
So, so.
I think it was the sign, the email.
The least, the most that I would ever ask for, accurate information, so.
And if you brought it back, people would still, people would still show up, but. You never take the same route? No, we'll see, no press. Bring Randy back, bring Randy back. Make a space for Matt. And it was wonderful, I thought.
And I don't see another zoning that would be better for the hot.
It's hard to see open things go, but we can't hold ground for space.
And, and I agree, I like all the. But I also like.
And, and it may not work out with the wetlands, you know, it means it'll bad in some year. Then, but then it will be on me.
That interests me. Oh, good. I was gonna give you some patterns of ideas.
Thank you.
Of course, um, of course, people always have the tailwaters running onto a spill. But there's the issue. But, uh, okay.
It was frustrating. But I think, but I shouldn't be able to sleep.
So let's, let's wrap this up. I think we can make it by ten o'clock. No, let's get going. I think we can finish this.
So can I make a motion about the vacation of the right of way? Yeah.
Make a motion on the next thing to the agenda item.
Cause I think they'll be fast.
Sorry?
Can I make a motion on item number ten?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance zero, zero, eight dash twenty, twenty-one. The vacation of the right of way on three hundred East. A second.
Motion on item number ten, ordinance zero, eight, zero, two, one. I have a motion from council member back in a second, from council member Sealy. Any further questions or discussion on this item? Now I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Item ten passes. Agreements, contract, bid awards. We have two items here. Um, we had a version drafted this before. What's changed is this is a multi-year contract with, with step rates. Uh, if you look at, I think it's exhibit A. Um, so other than that, the language and wording of the contract with sheriff and the county, uh, is the same.
Correct.
Any questions? Ask, ask Ryan. He, he went, asked sheriff, the sheriff agreed to give us a multi-year agreement.
I, I really appreciate the, well, you're getting presented.
No, no, I think that, I think summarize, go ahead.
I just appreciate your foresight in doing the, the incremental, um, increases. And I, I think that was very well. So I can make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion on item number eleven.
I make motion that we approve resolutions either one nine dash twenty, twenty-one.
Motion from council member Kurt, you have a second.
I'll second.
Second with council member Ballson. Item eleven, the resolution approved the law enforcement services interim. Any questions? Uh, Ryan. Can I call for a vote? All in favor?
I, I.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, resolution zero, two, zero, twenty, twenty-one. This is animal control services. Again, this is a multi-year agreement.
This is a single year agreement that matches the previous. I'm sorry. This is just a, this is just a single year agreement that matches the prior year. So this one is not on the same. It, no increase.
Something I wanna mention about this, this animal control agreement, this is for animal control officers, ACOs. They changed somewhere down the road. The sheriff has decided he wants to be in the business of impounding animals and operating a shelter. And combining that with his animal control officers. They also agreed to take over. Uh, impound and animal control for Logan City as well as handling animal control. Role that Logan City currently has three staff. The whole structure of how this is built. May change.
They need to build a facility, they, they need to build their own.
Do they need to?
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry. That sounds great. I like the offline conversation.
Personal interest in that's. Give us a background. I have a motion on this.
Is that why we couldn't come up with the multi-years because we're gonna transition the structure?
One, because there's no change, so we didn't look at that. And two, we were looking more for the leasing hours. And, uh, and be able to phase that over the population increase. And this isn't tied the same. So they're, they're a bit different in the, um, in the nature, but it didn't have a direct tie to the. It didn't have a direct tie, um, to them taking on additional services like that, so.
I'll make a motion then. We approve resolution zero, two, zero dash twenty, twenty-one, animal control services.
Motion from council member X, second. Second from council member Sealy. Further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Council reports. Items presented by city council members were presented as informational only, no formal action will be taken. What's your go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Um. The library is getting deep cleaned this Friday and Saturday. Thank you, Steph. And um. Then that, I don't really know what to report except for drought is a huge issue. Um, not a lot of conflict with. I'm receiving water between water companies, Black's Fork irrigation and that has potential to impact, impact the Black's Fork water exchange between the fire company. So, um, we, I'm gonna write a letter for the newsletter. I really am gonna do this.
You're gonna do what?
I'm gonna write some newsletter about the drought, um, and water use. And I'll get that, you need it by next week, right?
Flood irrigating, like my neighbors do. It's not conducive to saving water in the drought here. By the way.
I've had, I've had residents bring up that concern.
Because they flood irrigate, their water spills over into their neighbor's property, including the property that we voted on Saturday. And that's part of the reason why it's soggy all the time. They don't wanna give up their flood irrigation.
Yeah, so.
It's immensely wasteful. My neighbor's flood irrigation is, and there's this huge column of water. Runs down the street in front of our house.
I've had that return brought to me, but. Well, you can't, that's their water shares and that's how they.
So you're gonna draft an article?
Yeah, I'll write.
Four hundred words, half a page.
Got it.
Who's next?
Sure, I have plenty to say about water. And you need it by when?
Next week. You know, next week.
I'll report on the youth council. So we updated our webpage on the city site. So just that page is updated with our new youth council logo from this year. That Anna Castily designed. And Anika also helped me create, um. Online application, so they don't have to print it off and bring it into the office. Just gonna all go into, uh, Google form. And so we've now got an online application and applications for new youth council members. So it's eighth grade through twelve. Are open until the end of August and then we'll have our new youth council here. Um, we had our kind of end of year celebration this week and it was super fun. And um, then on Saturday, we're going to be in our newly designed float. At the Nibley Heritage Days Parade. So you can look for the youth council there. We're not planning on doing very many parades. I said to you, we'll do them as long as they're fun. If they're not fun, we're not doing it. And so we're, we're skipping the July parades. I wanna leave those holidays, family. Everyone with their families, but then we'll do like a USU homecoming or maybe some other parades that are close that fall on non-traditional holidays. Um, so if you know some youth who might like to serve on the council or more especially if you know some adults that might like to just head up one activity. Um, that would be helpful. And then I arranged for Mark to bring his pizza truck to most of the concerts. But he can't be there at the September concert. So I think people will come expecting a food truck now. I think that. That precedence is set, like we'll go, let's go hungry. Um, so we need to find someone for the September. We need to find a food truck.
They also provide you donuts still?
Could you do donuts and cider? It's a big football, they do football games, long as you're on football games.
Uh, no guarantees. There's football games in September.
Uh, high school.
Yeah. So I don't even recall if it's a Friday or Saturday night. Let me see.
That's, that's, that's more of a dessert option, but.
It's on the, oh, Saturday, the eighteenth. So there should not be a high school. They're on Friday, right? So.
They, they do a, they do a free play.
Yeah, so Saturday, September eighteenth, so.
Can I give some feedback on the concerts? Just real fast. Um, I thought the one who went to was great this last weekend. Um, but maybe it's more helpful for the city staff who tried to schedule them on Fridays and then be dressed on Saturdays because that's, and they don't have to do overtime to go and set up speakers.
Let's talk about this. Next year, we're gonna schedule them all by the end of this year so that we have availability on Friday. I had a hard time getting them scheduled.
But.
The end of twenty twenty-one, we're gonna schedule for twenty twenty-two and we can do them on Friday.
Okay, that sounds great.
But the next two are on Fridays, the July and August.
Right, I knew that. I knew some of them were on Friday.
Okay, that's, that's it.
George?
I kinda need to get back to my assignment, so I don't have anything to report. However, just as I was sitting here, I was thinking. How sick is, is Brett's wife? She's, she's in other state of the service right now. I, I'm just, I, I'm wondering maybe you can, I'd like to maybe send some flowers or something nice for them. That's my.
I'm sorry, I don't have enough. Hey, um, when I spoke to him last week, he was in really good spirits. But she. Said hi to me over the, she knew Brett was talking to me and she, I said, give Crane my best. And she said, hi, Scarlett, how are you? So, but I don't know how she's doing now. I don't know if she's in a situation that she could accept flowers at this point, you know. So.
Maybe when they get home.
When they get home. Find some of that out for you.
Can I report on Roland?
I didn't even say.
He came to planning meetings. The other night from the hospital after having a mild heart attack and a little bit of a stroke.
After his wife called and asked for him to be excused.
So I don't know how he's doing. I was gonna call and check on him today because he was scheduled to come to that meeting. The other night, or the, yesterday, and he did not come. And so I will report back. I'll, I'll go and see how he's doing.
So he, he, he told me a story. He was in church. He has a young woman who's an aide of some kind to rescue him. He literally, I don't know if he had a heart attack, but quick breathing, collapsed in church on Sunday. And this woman revived him. I don't know.
And he probably stayed for the rest of the meeting.
His eyes lit open and said, oh, it's a pretty girl. And he said, I guess he's, that's happened to him before. He's, that, we're, that, that's supposed to be.
And, but. So I'll just send out an email to let you know how he's doing, but he, he literally came from hospital.
He must have showed up just to vote on that reason. So he was so passionate.
I don't have anything.
One thing I wanna mention, Ryan, Ryan and I have had this surgery. We have a justice court here that serves Providence, River Heights, and Millville. And I'm very, we're very proud of our judge. He is absolutely perfect marks. He is a champion of law and returning, but he does really well. People who have been charged with various offenses have come away. Please, that, um. Civilly. Your case was handled. But some things have started to change. There are financial issues, there's some things with the. The state legislature, the sheriff called me last week and we had a long conversation. We don't wanna see the justice court system go away. There's been proposals in the past to the county to take it over. There's some cities like Smithfield that just dumped all the cases in the district court. The problem with district court is now we have judges. That are not just gonna handle traffic citations. Now they're gonna pass judges. Which is unique for every city. It's not like there's learning with the motor vehicle code. As it is the justice, the, the judges in district court are jacketed while trained. They've got all, every element. Of the code that's under their jurisdiction, from family law to bankruptcy laws and DUIs. And, and now they're gonna have to send more. But when it comes to representing the city, we've gotta send, of course, our, our city attorney. But it's gonna be standing in front of a judge who really doesn't want these kinds of cases. Because he's gotta research the city code, our city code. But it serves us best that we keep justice court going. Mayor of, uh. Mayor feels the same way, the Nibley mayor as well. They serve the site higher, they serve Nibley and it doesn't hire them, hire them. We have, Ryan and I have a meeting with the mayor this Friday. See if we can figure out how to make it work. I think the numbers work. There's, there's requirements depending on the volume of cases that we can. Requirements as far as the facilities and staffing. We'll see how that plays out. Uh, they're losing a judge the end of this year. Our judge is willing to take on more cases without traditional.
Anything else?
Can we, can we take five to seven minutes in executive session?
Motion to go into executive session for council member X, on a second.
A second.
Second for council member Sealy.